January twenty-third meeting of the MCCSC Board of School Trustees. We ask that you please come to order. This is a time set aside to celebrate members of our school community, and we'll turn now to Dr. Winston.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Haswell, Board of Trustees, and community members. We'd like to recognize the Benford Positive Celebration Student Committee. These sixth-grade students go to each classroom and collect submitted teacher nominations highlighting positive student behavior. The student committee members help plan and facilitate monthly school-wide celebrations. These celebrations honor students who have worked hard to make Benford a better place and who have exemplified Benford's core values of be safe, be respectful, and be responsible. The Benford Positive Celebration Student Committee members are great examples of the Benford core values and serve as positive mentors for our younger students. This month's Equity Spotlight Award goes to Lisa Ramola, preschool teacher at Fairview Elementary School. Ms. Ramola is a driving force on Fairview's equity and inclusion team. Faculty and staff often stop by her room seeking guidance and resources. As a preschool teacher, she models how equity and inclusive teaching practices can start with our very youngest students. Her instructional materials embrace her students' cultural differences. She has big conversations and is masterful at making the discussions developmentally appropriate and meaningful for our students. Ms. Ramola also led Fairview in the creation of a beautiful afrenda, which is an altar built to honor lost loved ones during the Mexican Dia de los Muertos celebration, also known as the Day of the Dead. It was a true collaborative effort, and the students were mesmerized by this display. Our Latin population was proud to share this custom and to be the experts. We value Ms. Ramola and all she does to make Fairview Elementary a safe and inclusive environment for all students. Thank you.
On behalf of the Board, thank you, Dr. Winston, and congratulations to all who have been recognized tonight. We will now proceed to public comments. I want to thank all of you who've signed up and acknowledge the guidelines to speak to the Board tonight. As a reminder, Mrs. Butcher will ring the bell once to signal you have thirty seconds remaining for your comment and five bells to signal your time has concluded. We have quite the stack tonight, so I do appreciate your patience as we move through these. First, we have Daniel Olson. Next up will be Hopi, so you can prepare yourself.
Hi, I did not expect to go first. So I'm actually the only person here who will be speaking on a very tangent issue. So the November election, twenty-twenty-four, for State House District sixty-two. I'm here to tell everyone, both on this Board and in the public, please support Thomas Horix for State House District sixty-two. It's going to be the closest state house election in the entire state. It was last election, and he is the only candidate in this race that is a hundred percent pro-public education. As you guys know, I don't want to fill you in this, the state legislature doesn't have a lot of respect for our public school boards right now, and you're under attack constantly. Every candidate you can get across the finish line that is pro-public education a hundred percent will make your job a lot easier and send a very clear message to the state legislature, to the governor, that public schools are here to stay, and they aren't the enemy. They're a part of our communities, a key part of our communities. Thomas Horix is open to speaking to anyone here about his stance on public education, after-school programs, helping with literacy, whatever you need. And in general, I think the big theme that you're going to see in this election is state legislatures that work with local government, not against them. If anyone's paid attention to the legislature this last two weeks or just any time in the last ten years for that matter, it just seems like the theme is state government against local government, and that's something we have to stop. We need more people like Thomas Horix, who seem to have an embedded interest in our families, our communities, and our local officials who've been elected by our families. I'd also like to add, it was just, I think, published a few months ago, state vouchers are going to cost the state roughly a billion dollars over the next two years. That has doubled from the previous two years, so it's starting to go up exponentially. And like I said, every pro-public education politician we can get across the finish line in elections is a major victory for you, for the parents in this room. Please, everyone, come out. I know the election's ten months from now, but every vote, every support, every call, every door knocked matters. It's going to be a very, very close race, so thank you all.
Thank you. Hopi and after Hopi will be Ruth Ite. I'm sorry if I said that wrong.
Good evening. I wasn't expecting to go second either, so here we go. Hopi Skosberg, I have a tenth grader and a seventh grader. They're in North and Try North respectively. They're both graduates of University Elementary School, though I don't think that that really matters here tonight for what I'm going to say. Mostly, I want to throw my vote in on, I'm sure more people are going to come talking about this consolidation and potential redistricting, and I want to throw a vote into the side of, I would really like it if we went back to that conversation started in two thousand nineteen, actually, about redistricting all of the elementary schools. It's been over twenty years. I think that it's past time to do that. I think there's been a lot of housing changes, a lot of demographic changes in the last twenty years, and I think that redistricting is just one of those processes that should be considered on a periodic basis, right? In all kinds of spaces, not just school districting, political redistricting, all of those sorts of things as well. I also want to say that I do not think that we need to have some kind of citizen task force to deal with the redistricting. I think that if you guys can put together a data-based, metric-driven system for redistricting that looks at some very specific variables that maybe our priorities are really important around districting, things like base population numbers, where students are living, where families tend to live, where there's a lot of housing, et cetera, et cetera, how are occupancy levels for different buildings, okay? And that's one of those things that I know has changed over the last twenty years. There's some schools that have gotten really big, and then there's other schools that have maybe lost population. There have been systematic changes that you guys have instituted. Moving Alps to Fairview means university loses population. Introducing more pre-K kids next year means that we're going to have growth in that area. So we need to look at population. We need to look at transportation efficiency, right? There's that SPIA report that somebody mentioned to me about totally SES-balancing schools, right? But that is really not very practical in terms of that specific report with regard to transportation. So transportation efficiency certainly should be a metric that you look at and absolutely look at balancing socioeconomic status, okay? All children do better. I know that you guys know this. All children do better when they're in diverse learning environments. So for everybody out here, all children do better in diverse learning experiences. It's not just some children that do better, it's all the children that do better. So that is certainly a metric that I think is important, and if you create a redistricting process that focuses on those metrics and maybe some other metrics, I think that that can end up being less controversial and less intensely focused and targeted than the consolidation proposal that's on the table tonight. And for brevity, I'll just stop there. Have a great night, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. Ruth is up next, and after that will be Jason Winters.
I'm Ruth Ite, Chair of the Local NAACP Subcommittee on Schools. The mission of the NAACP is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights of all persons and to eliminate racial hatred and racial discrimination. In the context of this mission, the Monroe County branch of the NAACP supports the MCCSC Equity and Diversity Goals. We are encouraged by progress to date and acknowledge that much hard work remains. Turning to the discussion on balancing elementary SES, we believe three points from the two thousand twenty-two Indiana NAACP Black Academic Excellence Plan are especially relevant. One, eliminate segregation of schools based on race, income, neighborhood housing integration patterns, and inequitable policies. Two, demonstrate high expectations for all Black students in order to close the achievement and opportunity gap. Three, engage parent, student, and community voices. The SES discussion is an important one. All children deserve high expectations, access to resources that support their success in school, and the opportunity to learn with and from others in their community. As the Board carefully considers how to proceed, please prioritize equity-centered engagement with those who face scheduling, transportation, language, and cultural barriers that may prevent them from being here tonight, from sending an email, or from responding to a survey. Please make your decisions with input from everyone you were elected to represent and honor the needs of all our children. In nineteen fifty-four, the U.S. Supreme Court's Brown versus Board of Education ruling struck down the separate but equal doctrine. Where is Monroe County in that timeline? Bloomington had racially restricted covenants and property deeds and subdivision plots until nineteen forty-eight, segregated schools until nineteen fifty-one, and housing discrimination through social practice well past the nineteen sixty-eight Fair Housing Act. The repercussions of our history remain with us today. In closing, a final point from the Indiana NAACP plan. Quote, "Maintain a committed will and moral imperative that owns the need for change." Thank you.
Thank you. We have Jason Winters, and after that, Colleen Rose.
Hello, thank you. My name is Jason Winters. I am a father of two students in Child's Elementary, although I don't know that that matters all that terribly much. I'm here to say I'm not opposed to the consolidation plan that has been laid forth, but I'm also not a fan of it, as it has been justified thus far. I'm deeply concerned that the district has not done this dumb work to figure out how to improve this situation. As we've looked at SES over the years and how you're getting a better way to achieve diversity and equity, all very important things, are we looking at it in a non-simplistic way? The superintendent's report says, quote, "In the first year, the addition of two ALPS classrooms at Fairview Elementary contributed to a six percent decrease in the school's free and reduced lunch rate." Also, the MCCSC website says that ALPS are self-contained classes for high performers. They are a segregated component within Fairview. And so to say that we have improved Fairview somehow by reducing the free and reduced lunch rate by moving ALPS there seems disingenuous and intellectually dishonest. I'd like to know whether we've looked at all of the reasonable methods for balancing SES, including redistricting. I'd like to know if this is the best method that we've identified and what we've done to identify that this is indeed the best method. And I'd like to know if the benefits to our students, without the way, the cost to our students. H.L. Mencken once said, "For every complex problem, there is an answer that is clear, simple, and wrong." And I would very much like to know that this is not the wrong answer to this problem. It is a problem that desperately needs to be solved, but I am not convinced that it is the right answer to solving this problem. My request to the Board is that we commit to taking the time to do this right. This situation has existed for a long time, and we should do it as quickly as we reasonably can. That said, we should not rush to doing something that is going to be far-reaching and has consequences, deeply impactful to students, without taking the time to make sure that we understand all the repercussions of these changes. I'd like to ask for a commitment to being open and honest. A lot of these things, we've heard that this is just the beginning of the process. We have not made any decisions yet. And we have also seen that that has not always been the case. Many of the things that are being talked about here today have been circulating in the community for months prior to this. And so to say that this is the beginning of the process, again, seems slightly disingenuous. Finally, I'd like to ask that we conduct a transparent, open investigation, that we bring in experts to help us figure out the right way to solve this problem, and that we seek input from all the stakeholders that are impacted by this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Colleen Rose, and then after that, Paul Farmer.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Colleen Rose. I am a proud parent of two Templeton Tigers and spouse to a Templeton teacher. I don't think it's necessary for me to use my time tonight to reiterate the facts that confirm the stark disparities in test scores, socioeconomic status, and PTO funding between my school and Child's, which is five minutes away from Templeton. What I do want to say tonight is that the problem before our community is irrefutable. We have a segregated school system. Sixty years ago, communities of color and their allies went to inconvenient and uncomfortable lengths, even putting themselves in harm's way to desegregate schools for kids. I think many of us in this room tonight want to believe that we would have also been on the right side of history with them. We have an opportunity now, in Bloomington, in two thousand twenty-four, to show our true colors. I hope that a progressive school board takes progressive action. I hope that this progressive community affirms and supports efforts to send our children to integrated schools. I fear that privileged voices will drown the viability of a merger in a million micro arguments focused on inconvenience and timing, and in doing so, continue to kick this can down the road. This is unacceptable. To not take action now is to say, both as a community and to our kids, that we prefer segregation over progress. I urge you as school board leaders to take this first step, along with consideration of longer-term and system-wide solutions to address the economic segregation of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Paul Farmer. And after Paul, Lisa Kroll. Is this it? Yes.
That's amazing, walking through there. Evening, President Hennessy, Dr. Haswell, and the Board. My name is Paul Farmer, and I'm the Association President. There will be three other members that are coming this evening to talk about some of the things tonight that a lot of people are here to talk about, and we'll talk about our stance that we have as an association. I'm taking a different route, kind of similar to what the first person did who came up here tonight. I want to talk about the Indiana Legislature. This is a short session. Usually when you hear about a short session, you're going, okay, especially in an election year. The idea is get in, get out, go on, get moving, and get ready to go into your election cycles and so on. That's not happening. That is not happening even close. You're talking thirty, fifty, sixty bills that are education-related in all sorts of things. Everything from bills that are impacting our referendums that we have passed with levies, that are maximum caps on those that we have already passed, that will have tremendous impact on us locally. They're talking about, and I'm not going to go into all those, like, three or four bills that are dealing with referendum issues. There are bills that are dealing, multiple bills, that are coming in that are telling us that public schools, you don't know how to teach. We're going to tell you how to do literacy. We're going to tell you how to read. We're going to tell you how to write. We're going to tell you how to do your math. And what we're talking about here is, they're literally going to come in and tell us what we are going to do and what we're not going to do. So that part, when we talk about destroying public education, they're moving that way. There's another bill, there's several others. Actually, we just talked about it just today at the Foundation meeting. The Foundation, MCCSC Foundation, have been trying for years to get tax credits. Nope, can't do it, can't do it, can't do it. Guess what? Tax credits for charter schools is coming up. It's going to get passed. I mean, really? So again, state legislature, going vouchers, charters, all the way. Last thing I want to quickly talk about here is, this has been coming up, oh my goodness. I've been around for a while, thirty-eight years, thirty-six years. We've talked about vouchers, increasing those. You've heard of universal vouchers and so on. This bill in particular, Senate Bill two fifty-five, it is a universal voucher bill. They have, if you go back to Daniels and Bennett back into two thousand and three, it starts all the way back there. They slowly introduce a bill, next year they do it again, and then finally by that third one, it goes. This bill is a universal voucher bill that basically gives every family, here, here's your seven thousand dollars, do as you want. Really? I mean, this is just something I think we have to be aware of. And I know it's a short session, but it has tremendous impacts on our public schools, so be aware. Thank you.
Thank you. As part of the MCEA, we have Lisa, and then Paul, and then Donna. You can reorganize yourself if there's a particular order. Okay.
That's perfect. Thank you. Thank you, President Hennessy, Superintendent Dr. Haswell, and School Board Trustees. My name is Lisa Kroll, and I have been duly elected by the members of MCEA and appointed by President Paul Farmer to read the MCEA Statement of Belief on Change Management. I will read the first half of this statement, and then whoever's coming after me will read the second part. The statement was sent to you by Paul Farmer on behalf of the MCEA Association Representatives. We wanted to read our statement at the school board meeting to make sure that the public had the opportunity to hear the MCEA's belief on effective change management. Our statement on MCE, the MCEA Statement on Belief of Change Management. Our purpose statement, "The Monroe County Education Association is dedicated to advocating for the best interest of our educators and students. Recognizing the importance of change within our school district, we have formulated this statement on belief of change management principles to guide our association's advocacy and communication with respect to proposed change initiatives at MCCSC." Our statement of belief, "We believe that changes in technology, programming, or infrastructure should adhere to the following principles to ensure the well-being and success of our educators and students. Number one, setting clear goals. We firmly believe that successful change begins with setting clear and well-defined goals. By establishing transparent objectives, our school district can ensure that change initiatives are clearly directed toward well-established outcomes rather than being driven by predetermined solutions, methods, or products. These goals should be communicated effectively and with sufficient lead time, ensuring a shared understanding and commitment to the envisioned changes." Point two, involving stakeholders. Change affects everyone in the educational community, and we advocate for the active involvement of all stakeholders in the decision-making process, particularly those who it will affect the most. This includes educators, administrators, students, parents, and community members. By seeking input from diverse perspectives, we can foster a culture of collaboration, harness existing expertise, and promote buy-in from those who will implement change. Thank you so much, and the next member, when they're called, will read the second part of our statement.
We have Paul or Donna, that's fine. Either one. Either one is fine. Oh, no, I think it was, you're fine. It was just, go. You're fine. I didn't know who's coming next, Paul or Donna.
I'm going to continue with the statement. Thank you, President Hennessy, Superintendent Haswell, and the School Board members. My name is Donna Bernans-Kinkade, and I've been duly elected by the members of the Monroe County Education Association and appointed by President Paul Farmer to read the second half of this statement. Number three, following a deliberative process, change is most effective when it is approached thoughtfully with clearly articulated procedures and timelines and with deliberation and reevaluation built into the planning. We advocate for a systemic and inclusive process that allows for thorough examination, discussion, and consideration of proposed changes. Change initiatives that are developed through a rigorous and open process are more likely to avoid unnecessary disruptions and to lead to successful implementation. Number four, using data. Informed decision-making relies on accurate and relevant data. We believe in the importance of using data-driven insights to assess the potential impact of changes and to guide the decision-making process. Effective use of the data is the most important way to align proposed changes with desired outcomes and to avoid misdirected initiatives that rely on intuition, anecdotal practices, or vendor-supplied projections. And number five, promoting transparency. Transparency is a cornerstone of effective change management. We advocate for open and honest communication through the entire change process. This includes providing timely information, updates, and opportunities for feedback from all stakeholders. Transparent communication builds trust, it fosters a sense of shared responsibility, and helps mitigate concerns within the educational community. MCEA is committed to advocating for change management practices that prioritize these principles. By joining us and supporting these values, we believe MCCSC can create a more positive and collaborative environment for change, one that not only supports the continuous improvements of our school district set forth in the strategic plan of MCCSC, but that also benefits and supports our member educators and the work we do every day with our students and with our families. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next we have Paul Rhodes.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Superintendent Dr. Haswell, and Board of School Trustees. My name is Paul Rhodes. I've been duly elected by members of the MCEA and appointed by President Paul Farmer to read the following statement concerning SES balance. "We ask that you respectfully consider the following before taking further steps to implement the elementary school merger strategies as outlined by Dr. Haswell at the December School Board Meeting. Our members recognize the current disparities between socioeconomic status of our elementary schools, students, and families. We further recognize the real need to fulfill MCCSC's strategic goals, specifically Equity Goals One and Two. However, the public has not been provided evidence that either scenario will improve student outcomes on an individual level. We're concerned that by focusing only on demographic percentages..." We're concerned that by focusing only on demographic percentages, we are not truly addressing the identified problem. Therefore, we do not support implementation of the strategies and urge you to adhere to Equity Goal Two to empower staff and School Board and follow the Union Statement on Change Management that we just read. MCEA is resolute that teachers, parents, and all community stakeholders are included and that questions are answered before large-scale changes are made. MCEA would like to see measurable goals set for all elementary schools to address the programming needs of all learners. MCEA insists on transparency in the process of supporting our most historically marginalized students. Using current research, data, and qualitative understanding, setting transparent goals, and evolving all stakeholders will lead to richer classrooms for all our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have Nicole Freeman next, and after Nicole, sorry, we'll have Nathaniel Groh.
My name is Nicole Freeman, and I'm speaking on behalf of teachers throughout the district tonight. I received an email today from a board member saying that the hope was to balance SES in a collaborative manner. While I find that to be somewhat disingenuous, I genuinely hope that's the case. An important group of people that need to be consulted before any sort of proposal moves forward is teachers. Yet, not only has this not been discussed with them, there's been an active censorship from administration concerning their opinions and concerns. Because of this, I sent out a message calling on teachers afraid to speak out to let me be their voice. The number of messages I've received from a variety of MCCSC school teachers speaks to a toxic culture permeating throughout this district, which is a separate but important issue that needs to be addressed. Their thoughts, opinions, and individual perspectives, as the classroom experts deserve to be heard without fear of retribution. I'm not going to be able to get through everything in three minutes, I'm going to talk really fast. But I want to note that each of these people wants to speak as an individual and not for the collective, but wants to remain anonymous. Childs in Templeton or IB schools, and the IB program organizes its elementary program around the primary years. So, any separation of the grades will significantly impact the quality of the continuum. If IB remains important to our communities, then all the primary years should be housed together with K-6 teachers collaborating together. There were concerns regarding the breakdown of student community and the points made about the positive impacts of older and younger kids being in the same building or on the same campus. For instance, reading buddies programs are highly beneficial to both older kids and younger kids. There are overarching concerns that the administration considers teachers' summers and quality time with their families as expendable. Tearing down and rebuilding classrooms takes time and is not an easy task. There are elementary teachers who have elementary-aged kids at these schools with them and worry about how their time either in the classroom or with their families will be impacted by multiple drop-off and pickup locations between elementary schools. The common thread through a majority of these messages has been a request to slow this process way down to include focus groups and expert researchers and the time it will take to do the research needed to implement the best, most beneficial solution for all students. There's been a request to do research on studies where schools are combined for SES or test score statistics, but the school facilities are lacking. For example, Childs has been overlooked for needed renovations, a remodel, a rebuild for over a decade. What impact do poor facilities have on low SES test scores when the rich school lacks basic needs like a ceiling that doesn't leak when it rains, or intact floors and walls, or classroom space, or up-to-date special education amenities? I could continue. Do, do, oh gosh, okay. There's a whole bunch of stuff, and I'm going to send it in and email all of you. But there have been some proposed solutions. The Board asked the administration for solutions to SES and was given two versions of the same solution, so they've provided others. Do a full redistricting. Those policies are in place for a reason. And it would be preferable to an ad hoc merger. If Rogers Benford is going to continue to be pointed out as the proof this works, then stop overlooking that they're on the same campus and build a, and build a school large enough. You get it, you get that.
Thank you. We have Nathaniel Groh, and then after that, Kristi Howard Schultz.
My name is Nathaniel Groh. I just want to start by thanking the Board for being receptive to public feedback and solvency. It's one that I think is immensely important, so I just appreciate you all approaching me in a transparent, open way in that respect. I comment this as someone who grew up in a different community. I grew up in a different community that also has extreme levels of socioeconomic disparity between schools. So, I've seen firsthand the effects that these differences can have. At the same time, though, that experience compels me to speak out against this proposal today. You know, this issue is too big and too important to try to deal with through half-measures and window dressing. This is a district-wide problem. It requires a district-wide solution. In particular, I just wanted to address a couple of concerns in the interest of time. First is, I think if you're going to make a change this significant, you need to subject it to considerable study and analysis. Respectfully, I don't think the superintendent's proposal rises to that level yet. There's no meaningful discussion of costs or revenue impacts from this. There's no meaningful discussion of logistical challenges. What impact is this going to have on an already shaky and strained busing system? You all just created a third-grade Alps class in Fairview, but under this proposal, Fairview would no longer have a third grade, right? Like, how are we going to deal with some of those types of issues? It's not clear that this proposal's thought all that through. At the same time, I think you all and the public is entitled to have a better understanding of why these particular pairings are being recommended and not others. I know I'm not the only one to notice that the proposal on the table would not address the schools with the second and third highest rates of socioeconomic disparity or disadvantaged, nor the second, third, or fourth lowest rates. At the same time, University Elementary, already one of your most racially diverse schools and soon to be at the midpoint in socioeconomic diversity, is included. Like, respectfully, I don't think that necessarily clearly makes a lot of sense. And so, I think that needs further explanation and study. It also brings me to my last point. This proposal, to its credit, is intended to enhance equity across the district, but I'm troubled that it does so in what I view as a fundamentally inequitable way. You're asking families in a handful of school districts to uproot their children halfway through elementary school, in some cases to move them halfway across town. My own family's children would be looking at a bus ride, I'm estimating upwards of an hour each way every day. Yet, for the vast majority of families in the district, they would allow, they would be allowed to continue to enjoy the benefits of sending their children uninterrupted for seven years to a neighborhood elementary school. That's not fair. That's not just. And so, ultimately, if you're going to do this, it needs to be a district-wide solution that ensures that the benefits and the burdens of this process are shared equally amongst all families in the district. Arbitrarily selecting a handful of winners and losers and continuing to do business as usual otherwise, that's not equity. This is a district-wide problem. It demands a district-wide solution. Please do not move forward on this current proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Kristi Harris Schultz, and then after that, Amanda Rutherford.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to comment. I'm a Templeton parent of two little boys. I also happen to be new to town and the secretary of our PTO, so I am not here to represent all of our families. However, we have had a set of public meetings, and for those folks that couldn't be here tonight, like the gentlewoman from the NAACP noted, I tried to gather our community's thoughts from the meetings and sort of have a short summary. So, my comments are in that nature. So, our comments are actually all questions. We also feel that we do not have enough information to understand this proposal and our position on it. So, our questions include, through the rebalancing, would the schools, would the ultimate goal be that the schools, none of the schools any longer receive Title I funding? What does Title I funding enable that addresses the inequity present at Title I schools that are not as impactful at non-Title I schools? So, what supports and services? Would we perhaps be at risk of losing by balancing socioeconomic status levels? Under this proposal, what happens to the multi-age program, which is so important at Templeton in our culture? And then, how does the proposed plan bring equity to low socioeconomic families shouldering the extra burden of kids at two different schools? So, transportation is also a big concern for our community. We are very afraid that families that are already on the margins would essentially be extraordinarily burdened by the current proposal. In addition, our comments and questions really echo what so many people have said here, that we believe that the current proposal is simply a Band-Aid to a larger systematic problem. We would urge you and hope that you would be very slow in your deliberation and actually consider a full redistricting as well. And then, lastly, several people in our community actually moved to Bloomington and to Templeton because they've been a part of other districts where this has happened over and over again. And when redistricting doesn't happen and it's just a merger, you know, those decisions can be reversed as the Board turns over, and we had great concerns about that, so.
Thank you. We have Amanda Rutherford, and then after that, Eileen Wenzel.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Amanda Rutherford. Not only am I a parent of an MCCSC student, but I am here to speak as a researcher whose work overlaps with issues of equity and representation and education policy, often in the stages of implementation. I'm a member of the O'Neill School of Public and Environmental Affairs, whose work has been mentioned, that is student work, not faculty research, to be clear. But essentially, what I'd like to say to the Board this evening is that I think that the proposal currently in front of us is wholly insufficient and really is not at a point to be discussed in any means. In fact, if we look at best practices, for lack of a better term, for positive and well-meaning public policy, it requires at least two things. The first is to have a clear, well-stated goal and purpose. And the second is that the proposal would then be justified and explained to all constituencies. If we take the first one, the goal, I am left to assume that the goal of the proposal is to address issues of equity. The term equity is nowhere in the current proposal, but rather, we're taking that from other documents and statements from the Board. Second, if we think, and I should say, equity is absolutely an important thing that myself and others in our community would like to discuss and I think have very important perspectives on. Second, if we look at the justification and explanation of the proposal, we really don't see any. And in fact, we are left with the assumption that socioeconomic status is and should be measured based on free and reduced lunch data. The Indiana Department of Education tracks this measure, but I have not found anywhere where the state explicitly equates this to SES. In many ways, measuring SES through free and reduced lunch has been recognized by federal agencies and many other researchers as a problematic shortcut. For one example, using census definition of poverty based on income levels would give us very different numbers to work with this evening. We have many measures agreed on by scholars and government agencies. The three most popular would be household income, parental education levels, and parental employment and occupation. In practice, many states and districts across the country use measures that include but are not limited to the percent of single-parent households, household income, the percent of homeowners in particular neighborhoods, and median home value, none of which have been considered explicitly to provide to the public this evening. There's a lot of research that we might cite on SES, mixed-income schools, school transitions, and school integration, all of which should be researched by the Board or experts they work with. Overall, I would like to ask the district this evening to carefully consider and assess the context of each of their fourteen elementary schools carefully with input from researchers, teachers, parents, students, and other community members, and work together in a cohesive way. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Amanda, Eileen Wenzel, and then, uh-oh. Yeah, it's okay. You just leaned. You can just... And then Brent Stamey.
Hello. My name is Eileen Wenzel, and I'm a parent of three, two who currently attend Childs Elementary School. Since this proposal was announced, I have met with so many people and parents who want to support this administration and its work to achieve true equity, who want what's best for the students of MCCSC, and who want what's, who want to make a difference in the socioeconomic and racial disparities in our district. I am also one of those people. And yet, when we look at this proposal as written, we note how it is lacking in answers to the most basic questions, that it does nothing more than attempt to average numbers on a spreadsheet. We also note that it is lacking the research to justify such a change to the four schools, a change that will forever change the personalities and cultures of those schools and that will further disrupt the educational experiences of many of the kids who have also weathered pandemic-related disruptions. Little research equals lack of trust. And to be frank, there isn't a lot of trust between the community and this administration. Things that would build trust but haven't been done to my knowledge. Hiring a professional consultant, a well-thought-out plan, more time to do this the right way, clear and better communication, including translating this proposal into more languages, surveys and dialogue among the families, teachers, and staff who will be directly affected. I have other concerns as well. I am concerned that this has not reached all students in the district. How does this affect the SES disparities at Arlington or improve racial diversity at Marlin? If this proposal is the first step to merging more schools district-wide, then we need to tell the community that. I'm concerned about the timing of this proposal. Had you announced this proposal prior to the November election, in which the referendum passed by 108 votes, I would not have voted yes, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. I'm concerned about losing the K-6 structure. Viewer transitions are healthier for children, and older-younger student interaction not only improves academics, but teaches empathy and leadership skills. As a parent of three, I'm concerned about separating families at different schools and logistics involved. Three repercussions of this proposal will make the lives of many parents and kids more difficult. Sometimes also meaning their parents may have to adjust their work schedule to get their kids and lose pay. This is true for a friend of mine, and I'm sure it is true for many more. To conclude, this proposal appears to me to be, at best, a poorly thought-out, shortsighted plan, and at worst, an end run around redistricting. Sure, redistricting is more complicated, but just because something is harder doesn't mean we don't do it. I urge you to come up with a better solution than the current proposal. We can all agree that the status quo is not good enough, and I would argue that this proposal isn't either. Our students deserve better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Brent Stamey, and then Susan, or sorry, Sarah Stamey.
My name is Brent Stamey, and I want to talk about why I like living in Bloomington. I'm not going to talk about the art, or the music, or the strangely large number of good pizza restaurants. I'm going to talk about the walking and the biking. And especially that young children can appreciate that as well by walking and biking to school. The benefits of walking to school are honestly pretty obvious, but I looked some stuff up, and so here are three. Lowering risk of childhood obesity, improved mental health, and a 2015 study actually showed that walking to school can improve test scores. Three of the schools involved in this proposal, Childs, Fairview, and Templeton, have the most compact population of any in the county and, as a result, offer the best opportunities for children to walk or bike to and from school every day. There are around 1,300 students at those three schools. If we guess on the low side and say a third of them ever walk or bike to school, that gives us roughly 430 walkers and bikers. Under this proposal, those 430 students would spend half their elementary career being bused to a school across town. Every day with this proposal, we would say to those 430 children of Monroe County, "Don't worry about childhood obesity. You might end up obese, but statistically, it will only be 85 of you." Every day with this proposal, we will say to 430 children of Monroe County, "Don't worry about mental health issues. You might end up with a mental health issue individually, but statistically, it will only be 61 of you." Every day with this proposal, we will say to the children, the 430 children of Monroe County, "Don't worry about your test scores. Your individual test score has gone down, but you have nothing to worry about. Your obesity, your mental health, and your test scores. Well, we've combined your schools, and statistically, our district is all balanced out." Thank you.
Thank you. We have Sarah Stamey, and after that, Gabriel Holbrow.
My name is Sarah Stamey. I am all for helping students in our district achieve at high levels, but the proposed plan to merge some elementary schools does not address this at all. The plan is not about equity or privilege, and it is certainly not about the children. The truth is that leadership is ignoring the larger systemic and societal issues that underlie the achievement gap in our student populations. And what is worse, they are deliberately avoiding taking responsibility for this by manipulating the data to make the numbers appear better on paper. One corporation later admits in an email that, quote, "Simply aligning resources, which we often don't have, is a Band-Aid fix for a much larger and much deeper issue," end quote. I argue that this proposal is not even a Band-Aid fix, but a disastrous and gaping wound waiting to happen. Leadership is completely guessing at what might work without any input from the stakeholders. As others have pointed out, this proposal shows a complete disregard for the actual costs and burdens it would have on those it purports to help. Leadership is deliberately obfuscating the numbers to avoid addressing the achievement gap, and by doing so, is making it harder to identify students in need. If corporation leaders support the proposal, you will do what you say you don't want to do. You are ignoring why some students are not succeeding and therefore continuing to neglect those who need the most help. Just because leadership doesn't want to take the time to develop a more robust strategy to tackle these issues doesn't mean it's our job to bear the fruitless burden of this haphazardly prepared plan. One notable change would be the increase in... One notable change would be the increase in class sizes. According to the reports submitted, Childs has 87 more students than Templeton, and University has 126 more students than Fairview, resulting in larger student-to-teacher ratios. Are there going to be more teachers to accommodate this? Will there be more aides, more specialists? According to leadership, there aren't any additional resources. So I presume the answer to all of these questions is no. Why should your guesswork and poor planning also be put on the backs of our teachers, who are already overworked and underpaid? I urge you to look at the systematic issues and try to address them. Sure, it will take a lot of time and a lot of effort, and it will not be easy. But as it is, you are not helping anyone, including yourselves. This proposal solidifies a pattern of distrust and shortcuts seen time and time again by this leadership. This proposal may seem like an easy way out to trick your constituents into thinking you are addressing equity, but I am here to tell you it does not. I consider it an extreme form of privilege to use terms like equity and balance as a moral justification for your actions while addressing neither. This is beyond insulting that you are using words like these as buzzwords to avoid doing the real job that needs to be done here. This is an egregious misstep and an abuse of your positions, and I expect more from the leadership of our public schools. Thank you.
Y'all, my eyesight is officially going. I've reached that age, and this print is tiny. So Gabriel Holbrow, and then Carrie Mitska.
Hello, board members. My name is Gabriel Holbrow. I want to talk about the proposal to consolidate the schools for SES balance. And just to situate my position in relation to the proposal, I'm a parent of two children at Fairview. Our household income is higher than the eligibility for free lunch and reduced lunch. I want to voice my support for the proposal, but also express some concerns I have, many of which we've heard, all of which, in fact, we've heard from other people here. Essentially, consolidating the districts and splitting the schools by grade level would be disruptive in a lot of different ways. As mentioned by other people, there's huge downsides to transportation. It's going to be harder to get kids to school, whether that's by the buses or parents picking them up, lose the ability to walk to school for families where that is possible. You lose the mixing of age groups, which is hugely important, and I've seen positively impact my own children. And I think all the schools mentioned have got good things going on now, and we would be disrupting that. Fairview is a really great school right now. I do not have personal experience with University, Templeton, or Childs, but everything I've ever heard about those schools is positive, and we would be disrupting that. Could new schools be turned into great schools as well? Of course they could, but there would be a transition time, and we'd be losing some of what has been built up over the years. As another commenter mentioned, third-grade Alps moved to Fairview, and under the current proposal, that seems like it probably wouldn't be possible. So faced with these downsides and others that people have mentioned, my biggest concern about the proposal is that we won't get as much benefit as we could. This proposal does nothing to address concentrations of poverty at Hamilton Heights, Highland Park, other schools, or the concentrations of wealth at Rogers Binford or Marlin. If we're going to have this must-disruption, let's have some big change. As other people have mentioned, I implore the board and the administration to look at corporation-wide redistricting, to look at geographically non-contiguous districts, to look at eliminating districts and assigning students to schools by other methods, to look at revising transfer policies, such as special support for the lowest-income students to transfer, to look at more fine-grained measures of status and inequality, to think big. If you're going to break some eggs, please give us a delicious omelet. Quickly, you asked for comments about the process. We want to move quickly, but we want to give time for people to adapt. I think, starting now... Thank you.
The bell. So sorry. So we have Carrie Mitska, and then after Carrie, we have Caitlin King.
Hey, everybody. Whoa. I've been sitting up front and filled up. Hi, board. My name is Carrie Mitska. I am the current chair of the Indiana Coalition for Public Education, Monroe County. We are a membership-driven, volunteer-run organization composed of local community members. Our organization's vision is for all children of high-quality, equitable, well-funded schools that are subject to democratic oversight by their communities. Democracy in action here. At their best, public schools bring students together and provide environments where children get to know, respect, and learn along with others of diverse races, family incomes, religions, and worldviews. Democracy needs public schools. We know that balancing MCCSC elementary schools has kind of been in the works since before the pandemic. For example, in fall 2019, the district held a fireside chat covering the history of redistricting in MCCSC. That was very informative. It's now been almost 20 years since the last redistricting effort. And some may say the three rounds of redistricting between 1990 and 2005 didn't go far enough to balance our elementary schools. Understanding the history of our district is important and should be publicly documented for community members to access. ICP Monroe County would also like to clarify a four-year-old capstone report that is being referenced a bit in our community. The 2021 report was the work of master students in the O'Neill School of Public and Environmental Affairs. It was a summer project. We are grateful to them for their valuable work, but they had limited access to data, limited time, and pandemic challenges. If the board or community refers to that report, they should take this into consideration. Since the last redistricting effort in 2005, Indiana now operates under a consumer-based, school-choice landscape created by Indiana's legislature. Districts of all sizes must be more nimble to best serve school-age community members in the face of state funding not keeping up with the rate of inflation and endless unfunded or underfunded mandates by the state legislature. They control the purse strings, unfortunately, and a lot of the rules. Indiana Coalition Public Education, Monroe County, supports redistricting efforts. We believe that integration by income and race can help realize the full potential of our public schools, the heart of our community. In addition, we support MCCSC instituting a regularly scheduled review of our school districts to ensure that they are consistently balanced as best as possible. Balanced schools help to reduce racial achievement gaps, encourage critical thinking, problem-solving, and creativity, and can improve student satisfaction and intellectual self-confidence. They can help cultivate meaningful relationships between individuals and different racial or socioeconomic backgrounds, which in turn impact how diverse students treat one another. ICP supports transparency, good research, and employee involvement, as well as community involvement in this endeavor. Transparency helps create trust. We realize that balancing is not easy. It never is. We encourage all to read the historical Herald Times articles available at our public library. Our community is not perfect. Humans can be close-minded in the face of fear of change. Again, read the historic articles. But hard things can be done for the sake of our community's children. They are our future.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Caitlin King, and then Brittany Mankadik? Mankadik?
Hi, everybody. Thanks for your time and for your service, and I know this job is far from easy, and our community definitely appreciates the work that you do. So my name's Katie King. I'm a mother of four, all of whom have completed or are going through the multi-age program at Templeton. I'm also a clinical social worker who works primarily with children and families across our county. As a parent and a mental health professional, I feel very concerned that we are introducing this shift in our most vulnerable children's lives, following a pandemic that has caused academic and emotional challenges for almost every child. COVID has... Thank you. COVID has taken an emotional toll on all of us, and as a parent, I feel the last school year was a recovery year. This is the first school year in four years that feels kind of normal, allowing myself and my children to fall into a steady rhythm and feel more safety in the school setting. As a professional, I have witnessed the emotional toll on families from this pandemic, and I have deep concerns about further disruption when we have not yet fully recovered. I feel this concern for teachers as well, who are the ones on the front lines managing these challenges on behalf of our families each day. The kids who will be impacted by this proposed school change are the ones that did not receive preschool, did kindergarten on the iPad, had to sit three feet apart and face forward during school days, and could not be rough and tumble on the playground. These children learned that it was dangerous to be close to others, and we are now unlearning those patterns and returning to some sense of felt safety. I urge the board to consider what a transition like this, right now, may do to our students on top of the impact of the pandemic. I have deep respect for the goal to even the playing field for our students. Though the economic disparities in our district desperately need to be addressed, the current proposal feels very much like a Band-Aid for a larger systemic issue. This decision would be one that could be reversed with a new school board and a new superintendent in a few years. I would encourage the board to consider the timing of these changes as well as possibilities for more long-term solutions. It sounds like a lot of us are thinking that, like, why are we not redistricting? And that's what I'm saying. Though more time-consuming and more costly, it seems logical that a redistricting process for the entire corporation would be the most beneficial for all students. And I urge you guys to please consider the long-term health of our families and the plans moving forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. We have Bryn Lee. See, I told you guys, I said Brittany last time. Bryn Lee Mankadik.
Hi, I'm Bryn Lee Mankadik, and I'm a third-grade student at University Elementary School. I believe that fourth, fifth, and sixth grade should not go to Fairview. University is a special place, and this is why. First of all, University is one of four schools in our district that has IB. IB has made me very passionate about being an environmentalist. IB made me an environmentalist because in first grade in our IB unit, Sharing the Planet, we were learning about how pollution is ruining our earth. In second grade, we kept learning about pollution, and my passion grew. Then I became class representative and convinced the PTO to put trash cans on the playground to reduce litter. Learning about real-world problems is why IB is special to me and University. I am sure that artful learning is important to Fairview students, too. Another reason why I don't think you should put University and Fairview together, that transportation would be harder for families. For instance, some of my friends don't have a car. Fairview would be a long bus ride for kids and parents to get to school. I also have friends that live in the same neighborhood as the school, so it makes them easy to walk to school every morning. This change would make it hard for families. Finally, the University Elementary community is very important and special. I don't think we should separate younger kids and older kids. For instance, in second grade, I learned about being a leader from my sixth-grade book buddy. Now I'm in third grade and can help with younger kids. And this is why I believe that University, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade should not go to Fairview. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Sarah Copper, followed by Willa LeBert Tavernier. Butchering names here, sorry.
Well, that will be a hard act to follow. Hi, my name is Sarah Copper, and I'm a parent of two kids at Templeton Elementary, which we love. First, I want to thank you for being willing to take on the issue of SES balance in our schools. The way the lines are currently drawn and the resultant disparities between the schools is not right, especially in cases like Templeton and Childs, where the schools are only two miles apart. Given the fact that our neighborhoods are economically segregated, I see the value in this proposal of combining the catchment zones to economically integrate our schools. I also see the value in taking on full redistricting, which would work to balance SES across the whole district and would be a more permanent and comprehensive solution. All students deserve to go to a school that reflects the full diversity of our community. And the benefits of economically-integrated classrooms do not work in only one direction. It is better for all kids to be in mixed-income classrooms. We all have so much to learn from each other. And we are doing our kids a disservice if we continue with the status quo. I do have some questions about what would happen to the multi-age program under the proposed merger. Multi-age is not simply having individual classrooms with more than one grade. It's the way the three classrooms in each stream work together. K-6 students gather every day for a community meeting. They have lunch and recess together. They gather every Friday for invitations, where they work on activities together. Splitting that program across two schools is certainly better than dismantling the program altogether, but it would diminish some of what makes it so special. And it would also split the teaching teams across schools, and it would not be possible to keep the K-2 classroom together under the current proposal to move grades one year at a time. My hope is that you will work closely with multi-age teachers to find the best solution if the merger goes forward. I'll end by reiterating that I support this work, and I hope that you will lean on the research and input of professionals, especially classroom teachers and principals, as you work to find the best solution for our district. Change is hard, but we are not going to get a different outcome unless we're willing to do something differently. Thank you for starting the conversation. It's long overdue.
Thank you. We have Willa LeBert Tavernier.
Willa LeBert Tavernier.
Thank you.
I've won China University, won in Tri-North Farming University. I've read through the full text of the SES report. I was presented by Dr. Hawswal at the December 12 meeting along with listening to his presentation and having discussions with parents across University, Fairview, and Templeton. And there are some questions that have a reason for us. I'm not asking the questions on behalf of them. I'm asking on behalf of myself. One is that the report does not... And we appreciate it's a report and not a recommendation, as was stated, or proposed. It does not clearly set out the benefits of balancing the SES between schools or these specific strategies of balancing SES. Since they will involve major disruptions, the proposed benefits need to be clearly stated. We should not be embarking on this just for the sake of balancing SES. We need data and current or historical examples that show that this will work to achieve specific goals, which we haven't seen what the goal is beyond simply balancing SES. Having had two children at opposite ends of the elementary school spectrum for a number of years, it is a challenge for parents who would have children at two different schools at an earlier stage than the typical middle-school transition, in addition to move more school transitions for the children involved. In addition, where children have extracurriculars and thus cannot be transported on the school buses, that's an additional challenge, especially if you are a parent who depends on public transportation, which I have in the past, thankfully not now, with the possible result being a decision to simply pull children from valuable extracurricular programs. And there are other reasons why parents need to get to children during the school day, which would pose similar challenges. A question was raised at a December meeting about these distances. I think it was in relation to the length of the bus ride. One of the responses was, there's greater distances in the Lakeview and Unionville school systems, but these are very different communities from the communities that we are discussing. And there are communities that form around the school. We, in particular, we don't walk to university for the school day, but for all of the additional activities that that school has, we do walk, and we see that as a great benefit. Another question that was raised in our discussions was the multi-age classrooms at Templeton, that has been spoken eloquently by others. But another is, we're reducing Templeton's SES to 37% over time, where it disqualified the school from under its current free lunch status, where everybody gets free lunch regardless of socioeconomic status. There are a lot of families whose income is too high to qualify but who are just barely making ends meet. And once the school gets disqualified, they now have to fund that expense.
Thank you. We have three remaining. We have Emma Hughes, and then Casey Jones, and then Mary Mahern.
Hi, I'm Emma Hughes. I don't think there's anything I can say that hasn't already been said probably better than what I'm going to say here. Socioeconomic status, I don't think that's something that can be easily fixed with just merging a couple of schools. What I will say is that I... I was a student at University Elementary School as a child. I did all of my K through six there. And what I can say is having a sense of belonging and community when you come from a broken family is really important. And because I love that school so much, I sacrificed so that my child could go to that school because I thought, you know what? This was the place for me. And I know that if I really enjoyed it, I am sure my child will enjoy it too. So I know that probably a lot of people have sacrificed and given up things so that their kids can go to certain schools. And I know some can't. But what I think is, is that having a sense of belonging and community, being able to stay at a certain school, the friends that I made there thirty-five years ago, I'm still friends with now. And that's because we all lived around the school. We didn't have, we were not rich, any of us, so we walked to school, we biked to school, and we were together, a team and a unit, and we still are. So I don't know how that would shape what you guys are going to decide or think, but what I think is that each school is special in their own way. And sometimes disrupting those communities that are around the school is a huge, huge, huge detriment. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have Casey Jones. And then Mary Mayhern.
Thank you all for your attention to the topic. What I've heard tonight and the folks who went first, that didn't know, that were maybe disappointed they went first, your list of notes didn't grow when you went first. But I appreciate a lot of people tackling the same things I was going to say earlier as well. So I will get to the things that I maybe summarized or maybe didn't get addressed. The first of which, one I heard tonight was that everybody, the community is so important to you. And I tried to think about that in light of, you know, they're eventually going to go to middle school anyways, as elementary students grow up. But, you know, as littles, their community, I think it's important that their community is little. And for instance, my kids still think Lake Michigan's the ocean. And I haven't told them that, but I haven't told them otherwise though, because it tastes better than the ocean. Anyways, in my research of this, I tried to go back to the original letter from Dr. Hauswald, and I appreciate that that was provided as well. I'm looking at kind of the differences between resources and results. And I really appreciate that this corporation that we've recently moved to allocates those resources very well. And I think they're allocated in the right places. If you look at where per capita funding was provided, they were higher for some of these higher SES score schools. That said, and I've heard it mentioned a couple of times tonight, two of these schools currently qualify for Title I funding. If, and the way it was proposed, like, it might be the fact, or it might be the case that university and Fairview might still have a, my understanding is the threshold is forty percent SES score. So they might still be able to apply for that Title I funding. But I don't think the Childs merger with Templeton would be allowed to qualify for Title I. And that could result, I've got like five million, almost six million, or sorry, six hundred thousand dollars, as far as what I saw in some quick research. Dr. Hauswald, I also found a quote from you, and I tried to make sense of it from 2019 when you were still at Kokomo. And you pointed out that there's a direct correlation between, instead, "Too much precious time and money has been spent over the years on the accountability system focused solely on test results, directly correlated with students' socioeconomic status." And I believe everywhere I've looked, there is a direct correlation between test results and socioeconomic status. Also, in your more recent report that we've all seen tonight, you mentioned the goal is challenging. And I think, as a previous speaker said, the goal of balancing is, the process of balancing is challenging. I still think we have yet to hear what the goals are, and it would be nice to see what proposed outcomes might arise from this. I understand maybe the data is all over the place, but thank you for that.
Thank you. We have one remaining, Mary Mayhern.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to be the last speaker for public comments tonight. I'm Dr. Mary Mayhern. I am a retired family practice doctor with thirty years' history of practicing here in Bloomington. Although I no longer serve as a personal physician in our community, I am very much concerned about the health of our residents, including the children of our city. I recently became aware of a suggested proposal to improve the balance of socioeconomic status between our elementary schools, and I'm speaking this evening in favor of the proposal to consolidate Childs Elementary and Templeton Elementary Schools. By my estimates, these two schools are just two miles apart. Inequality and income segregation has increased amongst school districts nationwide and locally. Extensive studies by social scientists have shown that economically disadvantaged students do better attending economically integrated schools than they do staying in a higher poverty rate school. And this is even when economic resources are poured into those schools. In fact, even when the budgets of poor schools were expanded beyond those of rich ones, it did not make these schools anything close to equal. This has been shown in repeated studies by social scientists. Our schools today are less economically diverse than they were two generations ago. We all know that a child's environment matters, and having classrooms that have students from economically diverse backgrounds benefits all students. I believe that socioeconomic integration of our elementary schools will lead to better education and opportunity for more of the children in our community. This is, in turn, will lead to a healthier life overall. Maybe they have to walk farther, all the better. I applaud the board's efforts to improve the balance of socioeconomic status between our local elementary schools. As Matthew Desmond puts it in his book, Poverty by America, and I quote, "Engaging with one another in integrated communities allows us to recognize our blind spots, de-siloing our lives and causing families well above the poverty line to become bothered by problems that affect those below it," end of quote. "Change is difficult and some sacrifices required." I'm very heartened by the informed interest and participation of our community members tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here and for providing public comment. As we did last time when public comment went long, we want to offer a five-minute break so that those who need to leave can leave, and those who need to break otherwise may. I would ask, though, that if there are those of you who are interested in staying for hearing our conversation, I would encourage you to do so. And if you cannot do that, then please do go back and watch it afterward. I think hearing our discussion and conversation is also so important. So thank you, five minutes, we'll be back.
I'm trying to make that decision, like, do I go, do I not go? Do I go, do I not go? I can go either way. I'm like, I don't know.
I'm going to, like, put a bubble in it. Everybody put a bubble in it. Do they still do that? Yeah? Catch a bubble?
Wow, that is, that is going back to some preschool days, right?
Yeah, preschool, catch a bubble. All right. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you so much for sticking around, for coming and participating in this process. I really appreciate that. Right now, we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the following: minutes from the special meeting held on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three; minutes from the board meeting held on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three; minutes from the annual financial reorganization meeting held on January nine, twenty twenty-four; ECA expenditures; overnight and out-of-state field trips; financial report; appropriation balance report; register of claims; payroll register and payroll claims. Do I have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Ross and seconded by Kathy that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Neat against? Extentions? The motion carries. Next for our consideration are the donations. We've received donations of over nine thousand five hundred dollars. Thank you to all of our donors, and your generosity is much appreciated. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Ashley and seconded by Brandon that we accept the donations as presented. All those in favor of the motion to approve the donation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Neat against? Any extensions? The motion carries. Okay. We are now at Old Business, which is balancing elementary SES. At the November fourteenth meeting of the Board of School Trustees, the board requested the administration and Dr. Hauswald to provide a report on strategies to balance the socioeconomic status in MCCSC's elementary schools at the December board meeting. At the December twelfth meeting, Dr. Hauswald presented a report highlighting two strategies that would reduce the overall range of SES in MCCSC elementary schools. After the presentation of the report and board discussion, board members sure recommended and the board approved to add the topic of balancing SES to tonight's agenda for further discussion. Thus, I would like to open the floor for discussion. Would anyone like to begin? And I can break the seal if that's necessary. So I think for those of you who know me and know how I work, this issue is no different. I have read every email, attempted to answer almost all of them, and yes, I do have something written tonight because that is how I roll. I'm sure that I missed a few, and if so, I do apologize. It's always my intent to respond to our constituents. As I've been sort of listening, researching, thinking, and parsing the various perspectives, insights, and solutions, I just want you to know that I have been taking all of that in. And that as an individual myself, I am very much interested in what the data has to say, or what the data has to say, depending on how we say that word, and what the potential solutions might bring. And that process isn't done for me. I think there's much more to do. I do want to be clear, and I think we've heard a little bit of it tonight, but we really have heard from people across the spectrum. I think we've heard from teachers, we've heard from social workers, we've heard from families that are dispersed. Some are adamantly opposed to the merger, some are in full support of it, others are invested in a broader redistricting, which I find heartening, because I think this is the most conversation I have ever seen on a full redistricting. It has been a source of sort of conflict and tension in this community for a very long time. So to see so many people speaking the word, redistricting or reconfiguration, I think, is heartening. Some people are mixed and just waiting to hear more. I think from a personal perspective, I want you to know that there are people I care about on all sides of this conversation. And so I think that we can be in community and have conflict and have disagreement and still do that in a way that is respectful to one another, much as we've seen here tonight. One thing that I have heard in some of my emails that I've received that I do want to just address is that the fact that Childs is the number one school in the state somehow means that it should remain untouched. And some people have actually written in to say that in fact, Childs sits at number one because it is somehow better at educating our schools, our students than other schools, and that we should simply take what they're doing and replicate that in other places. I do want to say that I find that that is somewhat problematic and that the solution to this is much more complicated than simply taking strategies and replicating them elsewhere. I would say that we have an enormous wealth of resources in this town. And not only that, our teachers are extraordinarily gifted, our schools are all doing incredibly unique things, right? And so I do just want to say that I don't think it's as simple as simply taking a strategy out and replacing it elsewhere. Studies have shown, and people have said that tonight, that attending an integrated school can be more effective, a more effective academic intervention than receiving extra funding in a higher-poverty school. In fact, well-designed efforts to improve school diversity, and I don't just mean by race, because in this conversation of balancing SES, we are not talking about race, but I mean by race, by socioeconomic status, and so on and so forth. That can also increase access to critical resources that students need to succeed, such as different kinds of educators, advanced coursework, and additional support. Simply pouring money into a school isn't a fix for this kind of an issue. So this is more than a question of dollars, but I also want to assure you, because I've heard this several times tonight and in emails, that this is more than a question of numbers. Our students are not just numbers, not for me, and I believe that I can say this, not for any single person on this board. There's no one here who sees any child in this district as simply a number to be moved around. So I'm not going to take up a lot of airspace. I have other things to say, and I know that my other fellow board members do as well. I do just want us to remain open, because I think that whether we redistrict or whether we move forward with some sort of merger or some sort of solution, one, I think there are lots more questions to be answered, things to be asked. We have proposed no timeline, so I heard a lot about rushed timelines, but we've actually proposed no timeline for this, aside from opening this day up for discussion. And so I just want us to sort of be open together. And that's sort of my request as we begin this.
I'll go. I'm sure we've got everybody. April actually said a lot of things that I kind of also wanted to reiterate, but I did want to thank everyone again for sharing their voice. As April mentioned, we have heard from a wide variety of individuals, either in favor of, not in support of, could be in support of, but just has concerns. So I will say, compared to high school schedule alignment, this has been a much more mixed bag when it comes this has been a much more mixed bag when it comes to the conversations that we've been having with folks and the emails that we've received. So again, thank you, and I hope that you continue to do that. It may take a while for, for me to get back, because we have received a lot of emails since that, but I do try to respond to folks when they, when they send emails. Change is difficult, it's very difficult. Rarely do humans adapt well to change. It takes time, I recognize that, I hear that, and I empathize with that as well. And even so, change is hard, sometimes that's what we have to do, we have to have an open mind. We have to have open hearts, and we have to look at all the potential initiatives that we might have for the betterment of all of our children. When I ran my campaign, this was one of my core tenets, was to look at balancing equity within our schools. It's extremely important to me, and I know it's extremely important to my fellow board members as well. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. And I do want to emphasize again that this is just a proposal, it's nothing more, it's to open up our discussion. I know that there were rumors that were floating around early in the school year about things, but I'm here to tell you that the school board was not having discussions on what to do in balancing SES. We've remained very public and front-facing with that, so I wanted to correct that. If anyone feels that we've been doing some backroom smoke, smoke-filled room dealings here, because it's not been the case. I pride myself on transparency, I know many of our board members here also pride themselves on that as well. There are a lot of questions that have been asked, and a lot of those questions are questions I have too. I am a parent of children in a Title I school, or went through a Title I school. My kid's school right now isn't even addressed on this list of things. So I want to know how we're going to do that in an overarching way, because we're still missing kids from, from this proposal, right? But that's it, it's just a proposal, it's just a beginning point for us to springboard off and have this conversation. Also glad so many of you stayed to continue this conversation, this is really important. I think I have one more thing, sorry. I'm, I'm just really hoping that you, as a community, stay engaged in this conversation. It's going to take all of us to figure this out together. I'm going to ask for patience as well, I don't think anyone here is looking to fast-paced this thing into reality tomorrow. We have a lot of work to do still before we get to anywhere on where we're going to be. And there's going to be, I, what I would presume, many more conversations with our community on this, with our teachers on this. And I, I did want to reiterate what April said in the problematic language that we have received in emails about Childs somehow being above everyone, every other school, and that we should just replicate that there. As, on a personal level, as a parent of children in a Title I school, our teachers are freaking amazing in our school, and I just, that really hit hard for me personally to make it feel like my, my kids' teachers weren't doing as good of a job as another school. And I just wanted to reiterate that as well, that, that really, that really, man, that dug deep. So, I'm, I'm done now.
Okay. I guess, I, I, I'm trying to figure out how not to repeat what has been said, but I do think it is important, based on the letters I saw, not so much the comments tonight, that people understand that there is a loaded nature in what we consider a good school and what we consider a bad school. And test scores, after all these, these years of advocacy that I've been doing for public education, both locally and at the state level, test scores reflect a child's family's economic and educational background. It doesn't reflect the teaching, it doesn't reflect the learning, it reflects SES stronger than just about anything else. And so, when you have concentrated group of fam, of, of families from a higher SES, you are going to have higher test scores. But we also need to think about what it is that we want, you know, for our children beyond the test score. I mean, every parent wants to be able to have, their kids have choices in, in their future and to be able to learn the things that they need to learn to thrive, they want their kids thriving. So, uh, when people talk about a good school, I, I can assure you as a parent of four that there are wonderful teachers in our, in Childs, because my children went to Childs. Uh, there are wonderful teachers at Templeton, amazing teachers at Templeton. I have friends who are in, probably, or have been every school in this district now that I've been here twenty-one years. And there's magic that's happening everywhere, and every single one of those schools is good, is a good school. And we have to be careful when we talk about what a good school is, because the, the implication is that a bad school is, is, uh, full of kids that are bad, or kids who aren't learning, or kids who have bad teachers, and it reflects on that community and that neighborhood. So, um, that said, and the test scores is back to my thought about what we want for our kids. You know, advocating for public education is advocating for the collective and for the common good. And a lot of people accuse public education advocates of trying to defend the status quo. And what I think is very important is that we don't defend a status quo of segregation, which has historic and systemic and structural histories that we have to be aware of. What we want for our children, or should want for our children, is to have the skills and to, to be participants of our democracy and of our pluralistic society. And they learn those things by going to school with children who are different than they are. And so, when we are sharing our school, our space, our neighborhoods, my child's future is wrapped up in your child's future in a very intimate way, and we all succeed in that way. And so I think that there's plenty of research that shows that segregation is, should not be American, though it is historically American. It, it should be something that we're always working against. And when we talk about desegregating schools, we need to recognize that desegregating is a first step. Integrating is when you recognize that I'm not here as a parent of privilege to make your school better. I am here because I can learn from you and you can learn from me. And we can see where our commonalities are, and we can respect our differences. And so, we, there's a very good podcast from the New York Times called Nice White Parents that is very important to, to read, because it goes to socioeconomic status too. So how are we going to get along, how are we going to kind of tear down our biases? So anyway, I would just say that for me, the, my value is in seeing that our kids are going to school in schools that are integrated and reflective of our society and of our community, so that we can all pitch in together and share our privilege and share our wealth of experiences and, and knowledge with one another. And then I do have, you know, the questions of the, very important to many of my friends and to people of the multi-age is a question that I have, the very important question that's reiterated about Title I funding, of course, and, but for me, definitely the goal is integration, because that's what our kids need for, I think, a healthy democracy and a healthy school system.
I, I honestly, I don't know.
Okay. Go alphabetical or...
It seems like you're ready.
I'll, I'll say, so I can be, so I can just be quiet and stop worrying about talking. First of all, I just, I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Haswald and to Brandon for even kind of starting to have the conversation on saying, oh, the Brandon, Board Member Sher made the motion, uh, meeting a while back to, to even look at this and ask administration to do some work. So thank you, and thank you to Dr. Haswald for kind of making this, again, this is a report, it's a proposal. It's not anything we're moving on tonight, but it's, it's, it's initiating a conversation. And I think it was a really bold thing to do, to kind of go against the status quo, because this is something that is so important to our district. These schools are special to me on a personal level. I worked as, I worked in the health office for a year at Templeton, and that was kind of the impetus for me running for a school board in the first place, because it was really interesting and eye-opening to see what other schools are, are like. Because I have a child who goes to another school that would be affected by this at university. So I, I definitely have been, this is something that I will be really pondering deeply. I, I want everyone to know, this is not something that I would ever take lightly. Because I understand the sense of urgency, meaning we have to move now on this because we, we don't want students to be disadvantaged any longer, but I understand the caution in kind of being mindful of unintended consequences or things we hadn't anticipated. I understand the comfort in having your school be close by, because I admit, I'm having a little bit of a panic attack thinking about getting my kid across school, or across campus, if he should miss the bus, which he does frequently. And I, I'm somebody who benefits, you know, I have, I have reliable transportation and things like that. So I certainly understand where parents are coming from when they're talking about how disruptive it would be to your routine. But I also believe the importance of looking at having specific goals, smart goals, that are specific, measurable, attainable, reasonable, and time-oriented. We look at data, we use multiple variables when figuring out what the best plan of action should be. Because I myself am a researcher, and I teach a course on social determinants of health, and I really under, I, I do understand the impact of poverty on health and the impact of health on learning. And so I, I really think that this is something worth looking into. It is heartening to hear so many folks talk about the idea of redistricting, because I, it's been brought up that there are schools that also have challenges that we haven't even looked at through this proposal yet. So, um, I do have questions about Title I funding, or what would happen to the multi-age program, or what would happen with the, I think it's CEP, the program where you get lunch. Everyone in a, in an area gets lunch regardless of income status, you know? I know some of those schools are benefiting from that already, so would that go away? And so, again, like, thank you all for having this space and this time for us to talk about this, because it is something that's really important. And thank you to everyone that came out and, and spoke tonight and offered their, their thoughts. And, um, so, and I too, you know, pay attention to what you say, I read your emails, and it, this, this district is important to me, so thank you.
So, okay, I'll, I'll take my turn here. First off, I do also have, currently have three children in, in the school district. I've had kids in Monroe County Schools since two thousand, and will have until two thousand thirty-one. So I've got a long experience in having kids in the school district. And we've been through redistricting, my neighborhood got redistricted when my, between my daughter's kindergarten and first grade year. So it happened, and at first it was like, oh my goodness, but it was fine. I think, and we've heard a lot of people ask about that tonight. Housing, housing density in Monroe County has changed dramatically over that time. Maybe that is something we need to look at, as to how we balance this out. Density has changed, you know, there's that huge complex that was put in out by Tri-North Middle School. There, there's just so many changes that I believe, redistricting, to find this balance is so important. Maybe the way to go, well, it can, it will probably inconvenience a lot more people than the proposals that we've seen. However, it's probably the long-term way to go.
Yeah, thanks Ross, Erin, do you have anything? You don't have to, I just want to make sure we give you space.
I appreciate that, I, I, I'm not, uh, I think I have more questions than I have answers. Um, the only thing that I kind of want to add to this conversation, I think most of us here know this, but I think some, to a certain extent, there's been this discussion of merger and redistricting as though they're mutually exclusive options. And I think it's important to keep in mind that they don't have to be, that we can, we can sort of explore merger as, as, I want, I'm hesitant to call it low-hanging fruit, because it's not easy. I don't want to, I don't want to pretend that it's easy. But it would be maybe a first step, and then redistricting as a larger solution for the whole district later. Again, they aren't, I don't want us to think about them as either-or's. I think it's important to consider both of those things. And I don't, I don't want to, I, I think, I'm interested in whether there are board members or whether Dr. Haswald, do you have ideas about where we go from here? What the process is for exploring this? Because I think like other people, I am, I am interested in making, in doing what we can to make our schools more integrated and equitable. And I have some of the same questions that have been brought up, both in emails by people who spoke here tonight and by other board members. I don't necessarily think that those things are obstacles, so much as they are things that we need to consider as we move forward. The speaker from the NAACP mentioned equity-centered engagement, which I'm really interested in. I don't think we had, I think we had one speaker here tonight who identified themselves as a Fairview parent, but also acknowledged that they were a Fairview parent that was above the, the income threshold for free and reduced lunch. And I think it's important to hear from those parents about their perspectives. I'd be interested in how we engage them more, I think there are practices for that, and that we should explore those further. My, my child currently attends a Title I school, and so I am familiar with all of the resources that are available. And I am, as others have mentioned, I'm worried about the short-term loss of those resources, while also acknowledging that we know that just pouring resources into those schools isn't the answer either. I'm interested in making sure that we can maintain the multi-age room and the international baccalaureate program. Yeah, I think those were the main things that, again, that I took notes on as I was reading emails, as people were speaking tonight. I don't want those things to be obstacles to pursuing this plan, and I'm interested if people have, have advice about where we should go.
Yeah, I want to share some things, thanks Erin. Some of you know, I have three children, and all three of them at different times have been to three of the four schools that, that would maybe be affected. And so I know from firsthand experiences, most of you do, that, I mean, some of their teachers are here today. And so I'm very thankful for all the work and the, and the different sort of cultures that are built within the schools and the teachers that, that not only help keep that, but allow the kids to express that as well, so I appreciate that. But if any of you have, have known me for, for any amount of time, this is, this is the reason why I wanted to come on the school board. I don't know, ten years ago, and, and it's something that I've continually talked about, redistricting, and then trying to figure out what other ways, because I know that redistricting can be very, very troubling to community, especially with school choice. And so, while I am also excited that other people talking about bringing up redistricting more than I've heard since I've lived here for twelve years, I'm a little bit skeptical, I'll be honest, that it seems only to be coming up now that there might be change and by those that are affected by change that want redistricting. All of a sudden, it feels a little bit, again, I'm excited that everyone's excited for redistricting, but I'm a little bit leery that, that that support's not actually there. It's to distract for maybe the change that we are talking about possibly making. And again, I agree with Erin, that I think that is something that we can do on top of other things as well, and I don't think they're mutually exclusive. One of the things, also I think a lot of people, a lot of great comments about income disparity and what that means in schools, and again, pumping money into schools doesn't necessarily help with that or change that. But one of the things that I think this needs is just further conversation. And I think that, one of the things that I would suggest, a possible moving forward to the board, is to narrow this down to two schools, and then to have parent forums, have teacher forums between this month and next, and then start to... And then start to um, to collect the, the district could open a FAQ page where people can put their questions and they can start generating answers to those questions as they have them. Let's give opportunity for teachers to to share from both of the schools. And I think also maybe even talking specifically to um, the multi-age teachers as well individually to sort of get a sense since, since um, since there's some differences there. And um, and also with both sets of parents too. So I think my thought moving forward would be that we would limit to, to the schools that we would um, agree to having parent forums and teacher forums between now and the next meeting. And then to continue the conversation with the hopes that we would have more information um, that the district administration can share about that. So that would be my um, my thought forward. And my thought forward would be that we would specifically look at Childs in Templeton. Because I think that there are a lot of concerns, I don't know that we can justify with the University Fairview One. So that would be my suggestion. I'm not sure, whatever, what do other board members think about that?
Living e- exactly equal between Templeton and Childs myself, I mean, that, that, those boundaries when you saw it on the map of the um, B-town, what is it called?
B-square.
B-square. Yeah, it shows how concentrated and closer it is than when you're looking at Fairview and University. I had some concerns about, there's always been, already been disruption between University and Fairview currently right now that that hasn't completely settled. And um, so I was just a little bit concerned about that one, but you know, I'm not close to it. But I'm, I'm, I, Templeton and Childs um, looked like more, made more sense to me as far as integrating the schools in that, with that strategy. But I also think that the conversation needs to continue because I think that there are some more segregated areas. But I'm also concerned about what I hear about some of our schools getting a ton of population and some schools having less. And so I don't, I don't know if that, if that is just hearsay or if there are schools that are, you know, the, the development that's happened over the last twenty years. If there are schools that are really just having large class sizes or just bursting at the seams where we could ease some of that in some boundary way, I think would be important because class size matters as well.
Yeah. So um, so I would maybe add to that, Brandon. I would say, o- one, I think just knowing how tapped we are right now, I might lengthen the timeline a little. So rather than between this month and next month, knowing that union conversations would have to happen in order to get teacher feedback, those things can often take like, a lot of time just between the back and forth and all of the discussion that has to happen and the gathering of information and feedback. So I might, I might suggest that we push that out like not to February but potentially to March. So between now and March, we start to have some of those discussions. But I would also like to see us have a discussion about redistricting, like fully. I mean, we have people saying it in the room. I'm gonna, we've written all their names down. If it comes to it, I'm gonna call all of these people up and ask them to come back and talk in favor of redistricting again. So I think I would like to see us also engage in a conversation about what that would look like or what the process would look like and how we would even begin to think about that. Because it is a big process and I think, you know, I think the superintendent's words might have gotten slightly misconstrued because he said that it's a much more complicated process or it's harder. And I don't think he meant like, in a way that we're not willing to take on. Because trust me, like, I am willing to take that on, right? I think there are many people on this board who are potentially willing to take that on. But I do know that, and there is data to support this, that redistricting is often a much more litigious process. People litigate often with regards to redistricting, right? So this is one of those things that can be held up again and again and again and again until it dies. And that is what I don't want to see because that's what we've seen before. And so I think our concerns and some of the reasons why we're moving forward with smaller scale mergers and things like that is because you can create integration by merging schools. And while it might not be ideal, the prospect of redistricting in a community that has often been resistant to that is, is difficult. It is difficult and it is complicated for many more reasons than simply legal ones or relational ones. It can destroy a community, it can tear communities apart, it's happened. You know, I have done oodles and oodles of research. I have seen the ways that schools and districts have, have reorganized or reconfigured, right? Some have gotten rid of districts altogether. Some have required that each school have a fifty-fifty balance of lower SES and higher SES. That there are models all over the country for what can be done. The question is, what are we willing to do? And I don't mean us as a board because we are a voting body. But whatever choice we make requires the support of this community in so many different ways. And so when I ask you to be open, I really am asking you to be open to the possibility that even if we redistrict, Childs may not remain as it is. Because here's the, the reality is that we still do very much have segregated neighborhoods. So when we talk about neighborhood schools, that's a tricky topic. Because neighborhood schools will then remain as segregated as our neighborhoods are. And that is not a problem I can solve, right? That is a problem that exists beyond this board and beyond our schools. And so it, it is not as easy as some of the solutions that have been sort of thrown our way, right? As long as we are segregated as a community, our neighborhood schools will remain segregated. And if we are invested in integration, we will have to take steps that are going to be probably unpopular. It might mean redrawing lines in ways that mean that where you bought your house might not be the school that you end up at. And if we are a, a community that is truly committed to equity, and that is not a word that I throw around loosely or lightly, if we are committed to that, then we're gonna have to make those shifts and changes together as a community for the best of all. And so that's kind of where I am. And so I think-
Do you see them as, I, I still feel like they're separate.
Yeah, I don't necessarily see them as mutually exclusive.
Yeah, meaning like if we do, if we do make a motion to put it on the agenda, these would be separate. Like we would talk about, about the merging and then the, because I do feel like they're two separate things that we're talking about.
I, I think we could split them apart, I think, but I, either way, I do still think we need more time than one month. So I, I would at least like to push out a timeline. Especially because, you know, I am looking at this MCEA statement of belief on change management and I do want to sort of respect what the union has given us, right? And so I think it's gonna take longer to have those discussions. So yes, I'd like to push it out. Maybe we could agree to put that on the agenda for March. And between now and then, we engage, we begin to engage with our community, with our teachers' union um, and with our families in a variety of ways. I would like to actually hold community conversations in the schools themselves so that we can hit those populations and ensure that people who are in walking distance or need to walk can walk. And then yes, I'd like to, at the same time, begin gathering information about what redistricting would look like as a process for us as a board.
Questions? Thank you. Thank you, uh, board by the way. I don't think I look, I feel as bad as I look, but it might be a toss-up. A couple points on this. I hear you saying that we might, um, just for clarity and to separate the conversations and back to uh, Cooperman's point. It's not an either or, right? So a conversation about the possibility of a merger, um, of two schools. And then a long range, which could take, as you said, many, many years, um, a conversation about redistricting. When, um, and, and I heard, and it, it, it's amazing how you all have put this together. I just took notes. And it started with April, um, with Board President Henderson making comments that we need a forum or a way by which people can ask questions. And you folded that in. And then a board member, Prani, you said we need more community conversations, teacher conversations. And so, and, and you kind of folded that into this process. And I know that this board um, seeks um, diligently to have these conversations in public. And so it's more public conversation. I, I want to, um, just from, from my, not to give an opinion, my role here is very supportive. This is truly privilege of the board. And um, what I will tell you, remind the board and tell the public is when I went through the interview process uh, back in um, two thousand and twenty, I think I had um, three board members ask me questions about um, the support for the board's goals or desire um, to create greater SES ba- um, balance in the elementary schools. Um, it was really the ques, the topic that was asked the most. Um, and from that was a request that, that before I officially started, that I had a lot of community conversations. And I went to every school and met with a group of parents and, and a group of students and a group of teachers and classified staff, administrators, community members and board members. And then we took that data, we used consultants and um, from that in public, we had conversations about our strategic plan. And so, you know, when we talk about the, um, uh, back to setting clear goals, uh, something that's one of the, the, the five items that the MCEA highlighted. You know, i- it's been a while, but back from two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, the board formally adopted this conversation. And I know that when I first started in, in July of two thousand twenty-one, there were a lot of people that asked me, what are your thoughts in the O'Neill report? What are your thought, are you aware that we have SES imbalance? What are your thoughts on, and I said, my job is to work with the board, we work collaboratively to accomplish the goals they've outlined. And so the point is that when we say, well, people have been talking about this for a couple of years, really this has been a core part of the strategic plan um, since two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one when it was approved. And so um, when, when I thought about that and, 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 and I thought about then, the conversation coming back up. And I know there's been equally, um, a large number of people and maybe board members frustrated that, you know, I, I think Brandon says he's talked about this for um, ten years. And, and, you know, I, I know that in October, um, Board President Henderson made a comment that we, we also have to talk about SES imbalance. And so this is, uh, a conversation's been ongoing. And specifically when um, uh, President Sherman made a motion and asked for a couple of strategies, it did get the conversation started. But again, uh, as you said, uh, Board Member Prani, it wasn't a recommendation, it wasn't a proposal. You just, you asked for strategies. The board is grounded in the research. It didn't ask to, to provide a lot of research. I will say categorically, someone mentioned something I'd written a while back that we know, um, and it's conclusive in research that it costs more to educate students in po- uh, of poverty. And we also know that when there's greater density of poverty, those costs grow exponentially. We talk a lot about Title One, we really want to inform people about how we use our Title One dollars and how they get distributed. It would be a shifting of funds. But the Title One dollars don't come close to covering the additional costs because of the density of poverty. And so um, some of the costs would be reduced, um, and I think that gets lost. And I think these are the types of conversations that we can continue to have. But we also know, um, and, and many people have provided the research. And that, that is the data, the research is um, very clear that when you um, create greater SES balance, it has a rising tide effect for all students. And so um, I just want to, all I ask is to give a little bit of context on this conversation that um, that this conversation happened way before um, um, this fall. And I do believe it aligns with the strategic plan and it's privilege of the board. Only point of clarity, um, if we were gonna engage with teachers um, and engage with community members, I know that the redistricting process would be much longer. And for the sake of time, um, are we intending to say we will have community forums and um, and staff forums in these two schools immediately that would affect this? And then perhaps one here, but then um, you know, in the months that would follow, um, because the redistricting process is much longer. I, I mean, um, it, it would be difficult to reach, um, you know, our twenty-four schools or our fourteen elementary schools um, in two months. So, you know, the question is, do we, do we start here at the two schools impacted from the merger conversation? And then also have some broader conversations. We could have uh, um, one of the meetings on the, on the west side and on the south side or different areas to talk about other redistricting and really get questions um, and uh, get feedback on that. So um, that, that was not only a clarifying question. But I, I did hear and I think that I understand um, that I'm sure the board members, because it's your decision, would want to participate in these, these conversations. We would work through our, our, through Paul Farmer and MCEA to, to see if, if uh, we'd be okay to have a more open forum with you all or if they want everything to go through traditional discussion. I know that they're always real flexible in that, um, and I think that would help. Those are my clarifying points, but I thank you all for your comments tonight. They're, they're all very deep and profound.
I mean, I'd like to make a motion, but I don't want to.
Okay. Um, I, I just want to clarify what you asked clarifying question. I think yes, that immediately we would begin those conversations over the next couple of months, right? So that on the March agenda, we would potentially have this item again. It would be old, it would then again be old business on balancing SES status. And tho- the purpose of those conversations is to have conversation, right? And so I, I think, I just want everybody to understand, like, it's a conversation, that that's what those are for. We want to hear from people, we want to get the sort of perspectives and the views of those peoples in those communities. Um, and then yes, I think in the meantime, I would love for us to begin gathering the data and the information for what the redistricting process would take, right? So um, not necessarily delaying it, but just sort of, yes, it will take a long time for us to get all of that together. But I think I would like for us to begin that process as well, sort of in tandem. Not that we would necessarily be reporting on it yet until we had kind of ducks in a row.
They, they wouldn't conclude at the same time. One's a longer process, but it's very clear tonight that there was a lot of support for that redistricting conversation. So, um, and I heard you say two topics, so um, so that people can comment on specific agenda items. Would you like on the agenda, uh, as part of this recommendation, to have one on the um, the merger? It'd be very specific and then one on the redistricting comment. Doesn't mean there's mo, there's action on either one, but you sort of have a short-term step that the board uh, could consider and a longer term. And that way, um, the community, I hope, would be clear that there's, there's multiple conversations going on. So we would put both of those on the agenda under, we'll check, new business or old business. Technically, it's, it's a, it's sort of a, so you can let us know.
Yeah. It would be, it would be old. Brandon.
Were you, I don't want to interrupt you. I just, I'm, I'm rusty on my Robert's Rules of Order, so just in case I can't say this after you make your motion, I want to make sure that when we have these community conversations, that we do use these equity-centered engagement practices. I know having the meetings in the neighborhoods themselves will be one of the ways that we can encourage um, parents who might not uh, have a lot of resources to come out and take advantage of that opportunity. But I, I want to make sure we explore as many ways as possible to make that easy. And then Dr. Haswell, if, if, in the next couple of months, could you also help us understand um, how this would impact the multi-age room and the IB program?
You have a lot of options.
Thank you, thank you.
And, and Ruth, you, you, the NAACP did a really nice job tonight and talked about this equity-centered um, conversations. If you could provide us some more of that information. And of course, we would love to have you, uh, you involved in all these conversations. And I would assume that we would try to make an effort to have at least one or two board members at all of these since you really are hearing this for your decision. I, I'm facilitating a lot of this and I'll be, be happy to participate, but um,
I did have uh, one final thing. You, you uh, helped me segue very well, Dr. Haswell. Um, I just wanted to encourage folks to um, really take note of what um, the person who came to speak on behalf of the NAACP with regards to uh, racial restriction, housing covenants that used to be in force and how this has impacted school lines. I, um, I didn't hear a lot of people talk about that piece, but it's a really important piece because those restrictions have um, really done the job in keeping areas segregated from other areas even today. So if an individual cannot get generational wealth, they can't move into those neighborhoods that are more affluent because, one, they were barred and then when they were no longer barred, they didn't have the means either. So as you're doing your research and thinking through these things, please look at that as well. It's important and crucial to the conversation when you're considering um, how this impacts over the long term.
I want to say one more thing too is that, from, when um, Carrie was here from the ICP Monroe County, one of the things that's historic and that this community did was an educational equity community committee. And I can't remember what it was, two thousand sixteen or something, but they did a um, a book group on a former um, now passed away um, school of Ed professor named Ellen Brantlinger did a, a book called Dividing Classes. And they, they read that and they did a whole year dedicated to her because she worked really hard when um, she did a study on what happened when Elm Heights, it's now Harmony, when that school closed, the parents were given choices of whether they could go to Templeton or Fairview or Rogers Binford. And I can't remember the numbers, it was something like there were a hundred and four kids- And I can't remember the numbers, it was something like there were a hundred and four kids affected and a hundred of them went to Rogers Binford and four went into between Templeton and uh Fairview. So there's a long history too, uh and she was on NPR, there's an old NPR uh thing that you can listen to where she talks about how difficult it is for families to um to integrate along socioeconomic class and what does that mean and what you can do about it. So it's a conversation that's been going on for a very long time in this community since I've been here.
Before Brandon makes a motion, any other comments on this topic?
I do, I, I like how I said I had nothing to say. Then I just kept coming up with things to say. Uh I think this is mostly to my, to my uh fellow board members. Um two questions that sort of remain on my brain that I'm committed to doing my own research on, but also if you have any resources to bring to the table in future meetings, I'd appreciate. Um and a couple of times, the idea of true integration came up. Um I think this is something that was one of our goals when we moved the Alps program to Fairview was to, to truly integrate it. And I, I um, you know, I've experi- I've, I've experienced that firsthand and I think maybe we started that process, but I think we could do more or should consider more how to do that if we're exploring um this kind of, this kind of process. And then um as I was doing my research for today, uh it's, it's fairly easy to find literature on the importance of integration. Uh it's a little bit harder to find uh um information about dividing schools by grade level this way. And I know that there are a number of districts in Indiana that have done this for, for a lot of reasons. Some of them have done it for transportation reasons. So it's not that we're at the, it's not that we're particularly unique in doing that, but I couldn't find a lot um on how, on things that we need to pay attention to when we do that.
We can work on some more information. It, it's really just being more aware of, of that support. It's really the length of time you're at a school. I mean, our students are only in their middle school for two years. So in these configurations, they would be there for four. I know that Board President Hennessy and I spoke to an attorney um just regarding um configurations. And, and many times in Indiana, um there are reconfigurations all over the state. And he, I think he said there's, there, you know, ten to twenty of them a year. Oftentimes it's for growth. And interestingly, it's a concept that you have a school and there's such a population growth, people don't want to leave that school, so they create primary intermediate. Um there's a lot of reasons, growth is, is one. A lot of times when they collapse one, it might be because population decline in more urban or rural settings. But um yeah, there's, there's reconfigurations are taking place pretty regularly. But yeah, I, I think what you'll generally find is that uh there's an encouragement for students to be at school long enough to develop those key relationships. There's some other pros and cons there.
Thank you. All right, I'm really done this time. Thanks.
All right, um I'd like to make a motion to place consolidating uh Childs and Templeton on the March agenda. Um and with the understanding that between now and March that we would commit to parent forums, teacher forums and an online uh question portal.
One item or two items?
That's my one. Oh, well, I, I didn't know any, I, my idea was just this one. So if someone wants to make another motion. Okay, how about this? And um put redistricting, a conversation about redistricting as a second item um on the agenda.
Thank you. Uh so I have a motion. Do, I have a second. Okay, so it has been motioned by Brandon and seconded by Ashley that for the March agenda, we place the Templeton Childs merger on following conversations in the community. And as a second item, a conversation about redistricting as well. Oh, I guess we have to vote. Um yeah, so all those in favor um signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. All right. That concludes the discussion of SES balance at this time. Thank you for your attention. I'm gonna pause while people shuffle out. It looks like you're crying.
I'm getting worse.
I know, I see it. It's terrible, he looks terrible. I know.
I, I know. Come on over here.
Every time he moves towards me, I'm like, I don't know. We'll resume in one more minute. We'll just wait for everybody else to shuffle out so we have a little more quiet in the room. All right, next for our consideration is the personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Ashley and seconded by Brandon that we approve the personnel report as presented, Dr. Staubbaum.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Haswell and members of the Board of School Trustees. There are three certified staff retirements and one support staff retirement to announce this evening. Patricia Harpring is retiring from University Elementary School at the conclusion of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year as a first grade teacher after educating students since nineteen eighty-six. Liesel Loudermilk is retiring from University Elementary School at the conclusion of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year as a fourth grade teacher after engaging students since nineteen eighty-seven. Catherine Marquesi is retiring from Tri-North Middle School in February as a French and English as a second language teacher after empowering students at MCCSC since nineteen ninety-nine. And Diana Jackson is retiring from Bachelor Middle School at the end of January as a cook after providing nutrition to students since two thousand. Thank you retirees for your many years of service at MCCSC. At this time, I request that you please approve the personnel recommendations as presented in the board packet.
Thank you, Dr. Staubbaum. Do we have any comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to make two real quick. One, best of luck to Liesel Loudermilk. She was responsible for my son now being in a PhD program in Outdoor Rec because he was her lot senior. Um so that, that's really neat. And I also want to give a shout out to, there's an ECA resignation from Coach Bless at Bloomington North and thank him for his nineteen years as head football coach. He did an amazing job and had an influence on my kids.
Thank you, Ross. Anyone else comments? Okay, um all those in favor of the motion to approve the personnel report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstentions? Nope, the motion carries. We will move on to contracts. Do I have a motion to approve the contracts as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kathy and seconded by Ashley that we approve the contracts as presented. Mr. Kenny.
Good evening, President Hennessy, Dr. Haswell, members of the board. There are several contracts and bids to be awarded before you tonight. I recommend approval of the contracts and bids as presented. Thank you.
Do we have any comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the contracts signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next for our consideration is a recommendation to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero three, transferring amounts for the Education Fund to the Operation Fund. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero three as presented? Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Ash, or sorry, by Kathley, that Kathy, that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh three as presented. Mr. Kenny.
Thank you. This resolution is required annually by State of Indiana statute. It authorizes the transfer of amounts from the Education Fund to the Operation Fund in calendar year twenty twenty-four. As background, in twenty eighteen, the State of Indiana had school districts set up two new funds, the Education Fund and the Operations Fund under Indiana Code. Yet, Education Fund is set up for the payment of expenses allocated to student instruction and learning. The Operations Fund is for the payment of expenses not allocated to student instruction and learning. Indiana Code requires the distribution of tuition support to be received into the Education Fund. This transfer resolution of an amount not to exceed fifteen million dollars from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund is to reimburse the Operations Fund for expenses that are not allocated to student instruction and learning for the twenty twenty-four calendar year. I recommend approval of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Are there any comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero three, transferring amounts for the Education Fund to the Operations Fund as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? The motion carries. The following policies are presented for the first reading. Policy five three three zero, use of medications. Policy three five one eight for professional staff, four five one eight for support staff and five five one eight for students, anti-racism. Uh Dr. Haswell.
Yes, good evening, board views, Stephen four you. Three, uh four policies, fifty three thirty, use of medications. And then fifty five eighteen, forty five eighteen, thirty five eighteen. And a special thank you to uh Dr. Hanks, Dr. Staubbaum. You know, Dr. Hanks facilitated a community forum. Um I know the NAACP was involved and we greatly appreciate that. Uh Board President Hennessy, thank you. And which we just gathered additional research. And as a point of uh clarity to our, our public, forty five eighteen um and thirty five eighteen are policies that are parallel to the student policies for our certified or teaching staff and then our, our classified staff or our support staff. So this really continues the further the work. We have more to do, we're continuing to build more guidelines. But this was an important step to make sure that we could use this as an educational tool and we received significant amount of uh positive and, and really uh meaningful feedback um during our community forum. So um there's a lot of work going into this. Um and as a reminder, this is the first reading, um no action is required tonight. We'll bring this back in February and we continue to do the work.
Thank you so much. Um if you have any questions or concerns, please let me or Dr. Haswell know. Um Dr. Haswell, will you introduce tonight's presentation on diversity goal number two, student discipline disparity?
Uh yeah, absolutely. Next up is Dr. Winston. And uh we are gonna have a really significant, important conversation tonight about discipline disparity. It is part of our strategic plan, you may recall. And our strategic plan is online. We have four priorities and goals within equity and we have two of the diversity. Um the two of the diversity are uh coming up this uh, this semester. The first one is on discipline disparity and the second one is on staffing. And so um with that, I'm turning it over to Dr. Winston.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Haswell, Board of Trustees and community members. It's my pleasure to provide you with an update of uh where we are with our student dis- discipline disparity work that we began most specifically upon your approval um of the uh strategic plan. If you'll recall, the problem statement that you proposed, that you posed to us was to decrease disciplinary disparities between student populations. And uh we've begun that work earnestly um and in a different manner, manner than we've done it in the past. One of the things that I think is important, just to, as a friendly reminder, I shared this with you, I think, a year ago. And I will share it again with you today and I'm sure I'll share it again in a year. Um which is our definition of uh educational equity. Um it's not lost on us that there are significant components um to this particular definition. Um and it matters that if we are truly going to accomplish and achieve the goal of educational equity, then we really are going to be looking at the policies, the practices, the interactions and the resources. And not one of them can be absent in order for us to achieve uh educational equity. And we talk a lot about that with our staff members. And during our trainings and our sessions, we've really taken this particular definition and we've broken it down um to figure out what does it mean to each of us individually and what does it mean to us collectively? So I, I wanted to kind of just share that. I don't have the luxury of time to really break it down for our conversation, but I would encourage anyone who is seeing this definition to really reflect upon it and make a determination as to what it means to you and how you see that impacting our practice. Our journey, and I, I call it our journey because it really has been a journey um in a lot of ways. There are multiple, multiple facets to this particular journey. I'm only gonna highlight a few things, but what I would say is uh it's a multi-pronged approach if we're truly going to achieve educational equity and eliminate and decrease the disparities that do in fact exist um in discipline. We tackled this with three different uh strategies, one being student voice. Uh we engaged many students during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We're engaging more students this year to talk about our discipline activities, how we're approaching that. We've also focused on having dated retreats, disciplined data retreats with uh several staff members. I'll talk about that in a moment. And then ultimately focusing on the goal of capacity building. If we're truly going to realize the, the ideal of reducing these disparities, we've got to build capacity of our leaders, of our educators and of our support staff throughout our organization. And so when we first began this work, um back in twenty twenty-one, we established a, a, a plan that would align with the strategic plan. So if you look at the green sections on the screen, year one and year two are the past two years. I'm not gonna go through all of those because I think I might have highlighted some of those um for you in the past. But it kind of shows you the complexity of the work that is necessary in order to, to proceed in this direction. Um we began by having our initial data retreats and it was a little bit different than any work that we've done in the past because we tackled it purposely in a different manner because we hope to have a different outcome than what we've achieved in the past. We've done law conferences and lots of training and really began to, to pull together um various individuals from throughout our organization to be sure this work is complex. Real equity, equity work is complex. And there are truly no shortcuts in doing this kind of work if you're truly trying to lead from equity. So we talk about safe and inclusive schools. You'll see there are six balloons around this circle that's speaking about equitable disciplinary practices. I'm not gonna talk about all six, but all six play a significant role in the work that we are attempting to do. And uh one of the things that we must determine and be real critical about is to identify what are the instructional and leadership practices that we're going to need to change in order to accomplish equitable disciplinary practices if we're gonna accomplish that particular goal. What we've started off doing is um we had disciplinary, disciplinary, uh excuse me, data retreats. And uh we've done those for the last three years. We'll do another, we just completed one in the fall, we'll do another one this spring. And the work that this group is doing is nothing short of amazing. Um and it is complex and they will tell you that it's very hard. What I, what I like about it is that we have over eighty educators who've been coming together for the last two and a half years to study together, to learn together, to work on this challenge that you've um put in front of us. And part of what we've looked at is how are we assessing disparities? And we're also looking at what does our code of conduct or our student handbook say about discipline? And how are we applying those practices when we are rendering potential disciplinary actions? Uh and then ultimately, we are going to be designing, in fact, we have a team now working on designing safe and inclusive schools training that we will then roll out to all of our teaching staff, our support staff and um administrators over the next couple of years. At the end of the day, we also know that we have to pay very close attention to in what way does our staff understand what we're talking about? And to what way do they also agree with the proposed changes that we're gonna be coming back to you in the very near future to make? One strategy that we've used and that we think is successful has been the use of discipline data retreats. So this is an exciting piece. One of our groups is working very tirelessly um on updating and revising our student handbooks. This past school year, we met with a group of students and they said, y'all's student handbooks aren't working for us. And so we took a lot of feedback from our students. They were very explicit um and not shy in letting us know in what way the student handbooks did not work for them. And so we began phase one of our modification of our student handbooks and I brought those to you last summer for updates. And so phase two of the student handbooks is really taking us to make them even more student centered student-centered, to incorporate the principles of positive behavior intervention supports and making certain that they are actually culturally responsive. To do any one of those three things is beyond complex. To do all three, really it doesn't exist across this country. And so we have a team of individuals who's been researching, looking at student handbooks across the country to see who's doing this work well. Several districts are doing one of these sections. A few might be doing a couple, but none are doing all three. And so we're very excited about the prospect of bringing to you for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, an updated and enhanced approach to how we're gonna address the proactive aspects of teaching student behavior and supporting student behavior. And so to that end, we also have a group of those eighty individuals who are working on staff professional learning. The three things that you see on this slide really talk about safe and inclusive schools. A year and a half ago, all eighty individuals who participated completed a series of five to seven training modules on safe and inclusive schools that were put together by the Midwest Equity Center. And the feedback that I've received from both my immediate team and the individuals that have participated, that that was very helpful to them and that they are looking to have more information. The second thing that we did is we studied this book. And if you haven't read this book, I really encourage you, if you have an interest in understanding disparities in disciplinary practices, is despite the best intentions. The book really talks about even great school districts who really want to do well as it relates to discipline. They have the best of intentions, but sometimes their outcomes still don't change. And so this, chapter two in particular, really highlights the aspects of that. And so we spent a year studying that as, within my own office, and then studying it also with the educators who were part of our data retreats. And then the third piece is we began a year ago doing this self-assessment of safe and inclusive schools in each of our schools. And so that's something that we wanna do on an annual basis where the school teams identify strengths and weaknesses in terms of what makes their school safe and inclusive. And we identify then from there strategies that will help to make some improvements. We can't talk about safe and inclusive schools without talking about mental health. And we can't talk about mental health without looking at all of the various partnerships that exist. I'm not gonna highlight all of those, but the fact that we have numerous mental health partnerships throughout our schools, we have engaged in trauma-informed care from a culturally responsive perspective, which is a little bit different. Trauma-informed care does exist, but it's not always culturally responsive. And so our folks have been going through some training since the, the fall to figure out what does that look like and how do we bring that back into play within our schools? And then in addition to that, we've increased, you all have allowed us to increase the number of social workers over the last few years, and that's been very significant. And ultimately, one body of work that we began with the school counselors about a year and a half, two years ago, was developing and establishing a comprehensive school counseling framework for all of our secondary schools. Not ready to kind of reveal and talk a lot about that, but we've had trainings and, and sessions with all of the counselors to that end, and they've provided some great insight and great input into goals and objectives and supports and resources that are necessary for them to be able to support the mental health and wellness of our students. The other part that I think is really exciting is the work that we're doing in the area of positive behavior intervention supports. We do an annual assessment every October where every individual school, we have our behavior specialists, and they assess the degree to which our schools are fully implementing Tier One PBIS. It's called the SET. This slide here really shows you where we've been from 2019, when we first did this, only ten percent of the objectives and the, and the activities related to PBIS implementation in our school, which is school-wide, were in place, whereas this most recent October, we're at seventy-four percent. So I'm very encouraged to see that growth over the last several years. On the right-hand side of the slide, you'll see all of the characteristics and the aspects and the components of the SET, the school-wide, um, school-wide implementation that we are looking to address. And so that's a body of work that we've been working on for a number of years, but that's a significant component to addressing the discipline disparities as well. In addition to that, restorative practices. We began working on restorative practices and training, and this data, this slide here just kind of highlights who's been trained, how many trainings have been conducted. And I'm most excited about a hundred percent of our educators have received some introductory information. Our goal is that one hundred percent of our educators will be fully trained in restorative practices. The feedback that we're hearing on, on the early basis is that it's been very well received and that it's implemented, being implemented quite well. We've worked very hard to have our own trainers within the corporation, and right now, we're up to thirty-five trainers who can train staff amongst our schools on how do you utilize restorative practices as an alternative approach to suspending or expelling our students to the streets? So then let me talk just a little bit about our discipline data. And I, I'm just gonna highlight a few pieces of that data, but I wanna encourage you and remind you that this is just a single piece of data, and we don't wanna run the risk of solely emphasizing this, but yet I would encourage you to, to look at this as a very promising set of data. And we're, we're, we're very pleased with the hard work that we're seeing in our schools, and we recognize that it's, it's, it takes a lot of time. So you posed the question to us, do disciplinary disparities exist within MCCSC? And we determined that, in fact, they actually do. And how did we know that? And so we knew that because of our team doing the work, looking at the data, looking at the raw data, and conducting what we call risk ratio metrics. And so I spent a little bit of time looking at that last year, but that's how we figured out that we do in fact have the disparities that you challenged us to take a look at. When we looked at some of those disciplinary disparities from our baseline year, which I'm gonna talk about in just a moment, we recognized that if you calculated the number of, of suspensions and expulsions, it equated to seven hundred and thirty-two lost instructional days for the students who were impacted. And what we recognize is that's simply not acceptable. And we, we know that lost instruction matters for every one of our students, and so we've really worked very hard to, to see what can we do to make sure that students are in our classrooms and receiving their instruction. This slide here just shows where, what our goal is. By the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we wanna continue to see a reduction in the risk ratios. So one of the things I wanna do is to share some data with you. Last year, I shared some highlights and some examples of data. This year, I wanna give you a little bit more detailed data, and this particular data is organized in this manner. The gray boxes represent our baseline data. We went back to the 2018, nineteen school year because we wanted to use that as our baseline, because during the nineteen, twenty school year, that was COVID, and then the year after that, most of our students were online for a good portion of that school year. So the most sensible year to go back to was eighteen, nineteen. The red box indicates a risk ratio that's greater than two point one. What that means is that if you have a, a risk ratio greater than two, then the students who fall into that category are twice as likely to be suspended or expelled. A yellow indicates a range between two point zero to one point two six, and then the green represents less than one point two five, which is our target. Down at the bottom of the slide, you'll see two arrows. You'll see a green arrow that indicates that there's been a reduction in the risk ratio, and then there's a red arrow that means that there's been an increase in the risk ratio. So that kind of sets up the next couple of slides that I wanna highlight for you. While the data that you're going to see is definitely promising, you should know that I want you to view this data with caution, because I do. We've spent a lot of time reviewing this data, verifying this data, to confirm that this data is accurate to the best of our ability, but I still personally view this data with caution. So this is a lot of data on this particular slide. This data here, this table is looking at risk ratio as it relates to race and ethnicity. As you look at this, you're, you'll notice that on the top line looks at our Asian population. I'm gonna go from left to right. The first, the second column in the table indicates in-school suspension. And so you'll see the baseline for our Asian population in 2018, 2019 had a risk, risk ratio of point one four. For the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, this past year, it increased to point three three, still below the one point two six, two-five threshold, but still increased. So it's green because it's below the one point two five, but there's a red arrow there to indicate that there was an increase. Not an increase that I'm particularly concerned about, but an increase nonetheless. And if you go across, you'll kind of see additional numbers. One that we are finding as promising is for Black and African-American. If you look at the in-school suspension, you'll see that we had a baseline of two point eight eight, and then in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had an increase of in-school suspensions that went up to three point four zero. One might say, well, why might that have happened? Well, if you continue to move to the right for out-of-school suspensions and expulsions, you will see that there's a reduction there. So while we had a three point five three baseline for out-of-school suspensions for Black and African-American students in eighteen, nineteen, for twenty-two, twenty-three, there was a, a reduction down to a three point zero one, still higher than we want it to be, but the green arrow denotes that it's declining, and that's what we find encouraging. And likewise, for our expulsions, in eighteen, nineteen, African-American students were four point three eight more times likely in our schools to be expelled to the streets. During the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we had a risk ratio of one point one five, and it is green because it's lower than where it has been, and the arrow is also green because it's, we have a reduction. So I, I purposely went through those two lines to kind of show you that's how you read and understand it. And so what we recognize in talking with our schools and talking with our staff who have been working tirelessly on this, and I, I commend them extensively, that as they worked really hard to have fewer students, we had a fifty-five percent reduction in expulsions this past school year. And in doing so, there were times in order to be creative and flexible and finding ways to not expel our students to the streets, they were trying to keep them in school, and that's why you see the increase in in-school suspensions. They're not on the, they're not in the streets. They're in our schools, and they're continuing to get some education at that point in time. But we will still continue to work on that as well because that speaks to some of the challenges and some of the changes that we wanna make in our classroom practices as well. And you would continue to go through, I'm not gonna go through each of the, of the variables there, but that's how you read the particular slides. And so cautiously optimistic, but definitely encouraging. The next slide really looks at gender and looks at free and reduced meals. And so you will recall that a year ago, I spoke to you about the fact that we also were seeing significant suspensions and expulsions for our students on free and reduced lunch, and that was alarming to us, three and four times more likely to be suspended or expelled to the streets. And we are continuing to make some improvements. You will see that there are some reductions in those areas. So the green arrow recognizes that they're declining, but it's still red because it still exceeds the threshold that we are hoping to achieve. There's an amazing TED Talk that I would, I would direct you to take a look at, and it's called "The Danger of a Single Point." The principles of this TED Talk really are appropriate for this discipline discussion because while we're looking at our risk ratio data, you should be comforted in knowing that we're also looking at other pieces of data to better understand what our practices are and how our practices need to change. The last era, area of discipline disparities looks at students with disabilities and our English language learners. Again, I won't go through those, but we have had challenges and concerns about the disproportionately high percentage of students with disabilities who in the past have been suspended outside of school, and we're recognizing that we're moving in the right direction in some of those areas, but we still have a long ways to go. So I, I pause there just to kind of remind you that cautiously optimistic, but definitely recognizing that the limitations in only viewing one level of data analysis. In closing, just wanna highlight a few pieces of staff feedback. Our staff have been very positive and very complimentary about the work that we're doing with restorative practices. Some of the themes that they've talked about are wanting to make sure that we've got more consistent use of data. So we've used, we've got two years' worth of looking at risk ratio. We're not experts in that yet. We're still learning that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that out on the, on the table so far to say we're experts, but we are understanding the, the limitations of that, particularly when you have a small in size. And so you have to be, it doesn't mean that disproportionality does not exist, it just means we have to pay closer attention and figure out what that means. So we're continuing to look at our risk ratio. We're continuing to work on our PBIS work, and I think the quotes are really relevant from our staff, that restorative conversations have been a game changer. They're seeing those as very positive in maintaining the relationships of students with students, but we've also had restorative conversations between students and faculty members, and that's also been powerful. And there's been a call from our administrators and staff members about having a really automated system that does a lot of this calculation for us. We don't have the resources yet to be able to do some of that work, but Dr. Haswell has certainly identified some opportunities for us to figure out how to, to do more of that work in a systematic way so that we can in fact empower our staff to, to focus less on the data itself and the calculation of the data, but more on the strategies and the preventative work that we're gonna be doing. Our community feedback, we had one community question, where can I get the student discipline data broken down by school and student demographics? They think it is important that our community can see the disparities so all can recognize the urgency in addressing them. We don't disagree whatsoever, and as I've indicated, we're not yet experts with this data. We don't have the standardization that we want yet, but that's something that we would like to be able to accomplish. And as I kind of comment, just as a friendly reminder, our spectrum of student voice, that continues to be how we center student voice in the work that we're doing to help us to better understand what they need from us and where are they seeing some of the disciplinary challenges? When we were working on our anti-racism policy, this was one of the areas that our student equity ambassadors highlighted as an area of significant need. We are still learning about the significance of qualitative along with quantitative data, and we will continue to center student voice in this work. The second item that I wanted to kind of just share with you is this, another resource called Street Data. Street Data is, is an approach that really values the lived experiences of the individuals that are impacted by the, the work that's being done. This publication came out a, a few years ago, and I think it really helps to center culture. It helps to center multiple definitions of equity, and it helps to make sure that we are focusing on the cultural, the political, and the social impact of the desired change that we're trying to accomplish. And so I see an opportunity for us as we continue to look at the lived experiences of our students and of our faculty and how that data informs the rest of the qualitative, quantitative data that we're looking at to be able to make the changes that we want. As we move forward, considerations for our data, we're gonna be doing, continuing to do this work through collaborative inquiry. That's what we've been doing the last two years. That's what we're gonna continue to do. Standardization of our data collection and our reporting, development potentially of a discipline data dashboard. And the one I'm most excited about is continuing to expand the use of our students' lived experiences, which is called Pedagogy of, of Voice, to really inform the directions that we take. At the end of the day, I think it's safe to say that street data does in fact drive equity, and it has the, the opportunity to, to really help us measure whether or not we're accomplishing the goals that we need to accomplish, not just by the numerical data, but by the lived experiences of the students that are impacted. As we move forward, year four, we have some additional training that we're gonna be doing. We're gonna be rolling out the new student handbook, the training for our faculty, and this is just a, a, a small sampling of the work that's underway, and there are more than eighty-plus people that are actively engaged in this work, and I look forward to coming back to you in the near future with the changes with the student handbook. We're gonna be sharing that, the most recent versions with our students and getting their, getting their feedback on that, and then ultimately the training that we wanna offer to our faculty members. Finally, not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. James Baldwin is an amazing American, was an amazing American author and one of my favorites, to be honest. And I saw this quote, and I absolutely love this quote because I think it speaks volumes to the work that we're doing in the area of discipline. And so I just wanna say thank you, and next month... And so I just want to say thank you, and next month, communications will be the focus.
Wow, thank you so much.
All these PowerPoints are on the website. We have them both in the Board Docs component and on our strategic plan website. We could do a deep dive on each individual priority each month, and so there's multiple ways to access all this information.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Winston. And I do just want to say, you know, Brandon, if SES balance was your thing, and it's the thing that prompted you to be on the board, this was mine, actually, disciplinary disparity, and the things that, that underlie that, including, you know, the trauma-informed work, the restorative practices, and all of that is, is sort of what informed my decision to run for this particular board. So I am so grateful to see that we're doing that work. And I think too, just from like, it's important sometimes to know who our leaders are from a humanizing perspective, and, you know, I don't know what people know about me, some people know more, some people know less, but I actually went to thirteen different schools growing up, so I changed schools thirteen times. And beyond that, I lived in a high-trauma environment with low support. And so while I was a high-performing student, I sometimes had problematic behaviors, so I was kind of chronic runaway. And so I can imagine, you know, how easy it is to sort of look at a kid and categorize them by their behaviors and not know the things that lie behind that particular thing. And so I think it's so important for us to be looking at those practices and to be informing our teachers and providing that support. And I will also say, from a teacher's perspective, right, I have been in those classrooms that are highly dysregulated for a host of reasons, some of the reasons we've talked about tonight in this very room, right, when needs are not being met, when we have an intersection of many, many different kinds of issues. And that produces dysregulated teachers as well. It's very hard to be regulated in a classroom that is highly dysregulated, even when you're at your best. So I think, you know, this is an important conversation, and it does intersect with the other conversations that we had earlier tonight, which is why I think balanced classrooms are important in so many ways. So I, I just, I'm encouraged by the work, and I'm, I'm excited to continue to have these conversations as a district. So thank you.
Can I just say also how thankful I am, because as the senior-most board member here, I can remember a time when we approached equity issues, discipline issues, especially racist issues, with like a whack-a-mole approach of like, just to be sort of shutting it down and trying to solve a problem, but not anything that's long-term. And I'm so grateful to you, Dr. Hauswald, that when you came in, we had this strategic plan that we put together and that we're moving in that direction, and we can watch that progress, and it's just very, very exciting. So thank you very much.
Speaking of that, I'm reminded how often the administrators thank the board for approving the strategic plan, because like whack-a-mole, they're often guessing what it is we should be prioritizing. This gives us a clear blueprint. And Dr. Winston also continues, this is one of the quarterly updates on anti-racism. Occasionally, people ask, she continues to provide those quarterly updates. I usually mention them in my comments, but they're also on the website, directly related to our anti-racism work, if anybody wants to look at most recent one as well, which is clearly part of our anti-racism work.
I have a quick comment. Keep this quick, because I feel like Jeff needs to go home.
Maybe.
I want to be really, I just want to say thank you so much, Dr. Winston. And this, this strikes me as an incredible amount of work, and so thank you for giving it. Thank you.
Sorry, Jeff, but I am also going to extend my thank yous to Dr. Winston and all the individuals who have been working on this. It's such an important, important thing, and I appreciated your cautionary data. I think that, you know, even though it is cautionary data, as you say, it does show that more of our students are staying inside our school buildings instead of outside, and so that's helping them in massive ways. And James Baldwin's one of my favorites, too.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hauswald and Dr. Winston and the entire cabinet for this presentation tonight. We're going to move on to committee reports. Does the board have any comments or reports you would like to share?
I do. So I am the legislative liaison for the board. I will not go on and on and on, as I could, as Mr. Farmer mentioned, even though it is a short session, the onslaught of bills personally have been overwhelming to try and sift through on public education. So I just, I polled, I think, four or five out, just to kind of quickly put out. So the first one is SB one, which is the third-grade retention bill, and while it does have some exclusions for who would be retained for not passing I-READ, I think it's probably a pretty problematic one, because research shows retaining students does not set them up for success. It would be far better if we would look at preventative measures like universal pre-K and the like before retaining students. Mr. Farmer also mentioned SB one forty-five, which is tax credits for charter school contributions. Not a fan of that one either. Then there is the HB thirteen seventy-six, which is the referendum language, which keeps getting introduced over and over again. Mr. Farmer also mentioned that one, we must have been on the same wavelength. And then there's HB ten twenty, which removes the requirement for pedagogy, oh, boy, I did. Pedagogy, I can't say that word, I tried over and over. Yes, examinations as a prerequisite for obtaining a teaching license. That's a fun one, I think. And then there's also HB ten thirty-seven, which is a good one, which would raise our teacher salaries from a minimum of forty to sixty K. So I did want to end on a more positive note.
Does that come with funding?
That's the right question.
They love unfunded mandates.
But there are, there are so many bills right now on public education that I thought, being a short session, that it was going to be a little bit easier to sift through, and it's been very overwhelming to, to look through those. And so I, I know that there's probably some that I am missing that need raised awareness, for sure, but as I said, those are just some of the ones that had stuck out to me. They, oh, I don't know the, the number, but there's also one that would like to put Chaplains in schools, so that's another, another one. Sorry, I don't remember the bill number for that one, I just popped in my head that that is also on the docket.
Thank you very much for those comments. Any other board comments or committee reports? Excellent. And finally, Dr. Hauswald, do you have any information to share with us?
Just briefly, most importantly, kindergarten registration for, and open houses for pre-K and kindergarten in all our elementary schools. It's going to be held Thursday, February eighth, from six to seven. More information will be sent out. It's an annual open house event. It's for families and students who are new to the district or the school community. Provides an opportunity to visit schools and meet with staff members. At the open houses, elementary schools, they host information tables for our four-year-old pre-K families. We encourage them to come and tour the buildings as well. Just a reminder that kindergarten and pre-K enrollment, as you know, thanks to the referendum, we are expanding to thirteen sites. Our four-year-old pre-K for next year, that's all of our elementary campuses and one between Rogers and Bedford. And so we have a brochure going out in just a couple weeks, digital information going out even sooner, you'll see it in the schools. So we're really, anyone that, if you know someone that's going to be four by August first, two thousand twenty-four, they would be eligible for this, as you know. It is free for anyone that is below two hundred and twenty-five percent of poverty, and we will also have all the charts online, and we can help families understand that their true cost. We define affordable as being two thousand or four thousand a year. Two thousand is for the families making less than three hundred and twenty-five percent of poverty, and then everyone above that, it's, would be a four-thousand-dollar annual fee. So again, we provide transportation, and we have a lot more information coming out about that, but we're excited, and enrollment starts on February first for both pre-K and kindergarten. I'll skip the legislative update, because actually, Mr. Farmer and Board Member Honey did far better than I would have done. The only caution, I think Paul hinted at this, is they're already gearing up, they're throwing out bills and saying, but we're going to wait till two thousand twenty-five. This is the collapsing of vouchers and scholarships, all of this, and paying parents through the Indiana State Treasurer in an unaccountable way, and it's very, very problematic, but we want to keep that on our radar as well. And then just a reminder, President's Day is Monday, February nineteenth, and MCCSC schools are closed that day, and with that, I conclude my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Hauswald. The next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and we are adjourned.